Good.
Good.
Go ahead and get our work session called the order. Um, first time we're generally going to do a pledge of allegiance.
Oh, definitely. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Wow, well, it looks like we have all made this memorable thing. Nice. Thank you guys for taking the time for our work session. Uh, Pat, we might as well just make you an honorary member. They were here every time too, but thanks for being here. Um, so with that, we'll get going. It's like you're our first item on our agenda. Um, we'll let you get it off.
Okay. Um. So this is, uh. Some of you guys.
I wish it down there.
Okay. And I have one to turn off for the. And I have a great duty to. So this is, um. Out west, go down Wall Street to about seventy-one hundred west. Right across the street from Reach Park.
Can you make this so I can see what you have on this?
We did a Carol Blake one. I actually bought it. I know. That's the elder. Finished way phase one, started phase two, had it just about completely done and then found out that they'd never had the, uh. Septic tanks approved. And I really literally going to the final and found out the separate things weren't moving. That was great, great thought. I was super excited about that. Felix, I think you've been that meeting in Korea. Remember that. Um, so, uh. I had to go back and redo all of the subject stuff. I had to do a communal subject system. I had to do a bunch of studies. Had to get it approved by the state. Had to get it, uh, we were counting to be a body of politic on it and take it over to go to the commission, get it all approved. All sorts of stuff. But then in the meantime, I was also working on getting a sewer system for them. Going to Little Mountain. So I was doing both at the same time in case, you know, whichever, whichever one worked first. I spent like thirty-five thousand and hundreds and hundreds of hours getting it approved. I got it approved. And then I got the sewer system approved. So we're not all the way done, but we're, we're really, really close. Um, going down to OMSA with a pressurized, a pre-moist sewer system, take it down. Um, and tie in. Um, and in the meantime of doing all that. I spent a lot of time working with, um, Randy Marriott. He owns the ground to the west of the, you know, the forty-eight. And so we're working to deal with, with him. I told him I would develop his ground for him and, uh. Then give it to him. Uh, and, uh, we were working through all that and he was actually going to take over. The, um, pond, I had a big pond on the side of it. There's the secondary system. Now, when I did buy phase one, as Felix's knows very well, it's a horrible system. It was a gravity bed. Barely had any from the top of the pond to the very last lot of it. It had a fifteen inch drop. It was horrible, but that's what I was stuck with. I bought six lots in there. I had to buy him out of it just so I could finish and get him to see a logo on my own houses. Um. So what I have, uh. What I want to do to fix that, the reason I'm bringing that up, that's been a sore spot. For a lot of people out there that seem to get down and a lot of calls about it. Um. With, with the secondary sit with the phase two, I'm going to put a correct your eyes. I'm just doing normal. Same run-of-the-mill stuff we always do. And then Randy is, is going to take it. I'm still going to be working with his team. Whoever's going to run the water still. Uh, it's not off the table yet, but I don't know. I can't say what's going to happen, but we'll figure it. If he doesn't pick it overall. Pretty secondary, whatever we can work out with the county. It'll be a pressurized pump, just like we've done in multiple other subdivision. What I'll do is we've got a fifteen inch line going all the way through the subdivision and it takes it to every single house. So I'll just use the existing fifteen inch pipe to take the pressurized line, use it like a sleeve. To take it to the existing phase ones. They'll all, they'll all have a pressurized system at that point instead of using this horrible gravity bed. So it'll, it'll, it'll get rid of all that. Um, and then I know that's kind of sidetracked the weather, but I just wanted to, that's been a big, big sore subject of. Why would we let you go to phase two if phase one is happening wrong? So.
Well, glad you brought that up.
And I knew that would be a, a sore spot because it's like, like, okay, it's on the bus just a little bit. He didn't know. That I, well, I assume he didn't know that I didn't design that. And so I've been kind of, hey, this stupid developer designed this horrible. I'm like, Felix, buddy. Didn't design that. Oh, I forgot. Or I didn't know I care. So anyway, I just wanna.
I don't want to blame you anyway.
I know. But I don't want to read it. I, I'm not that developer. That's a four, but I did fix it. I made it work and it's been locked into that. But, uh, with that, I will solve that problem. Um, so what I am proposing is a phase two. And, um. It's got, so. A total of fifty-two lots on it. And, and one of the problems it was. I, um, I don't even want to say the word because I have a grin just once in my evil eye. It was the. Okay, okay. Let me work. The, the approval you guys had for you, you've all these open space and, uh.
Plus, 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 sir.
So we're going to change that. And like I said, I've worked it out with Randy to come through his ground, do emergency access. And develop his ground as well. So that takes care of, there is only fifteen original lots in the phase two. Because there's only thirty total lots to live on one way and one way. So now there is, you know, obviously there's another way out. And I have, uh, started conversations. Started conversation, not, 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 not the park that's across the street. Somebody told me, I don't know, but the fine pushing really likes to support the park. But I wanted to talk with them about what they wanted to do to, to support parks to get something. I wanted to bring them to bring that up to, a- and so I've talked with Joe Giordano. And we're going to meet with the board and see what they need, what they want. Um, and he, he tried this. We were actually working some cattle. We were talking, I mean, some horses that we were talking and he said, uh, that's great. What we really want is, you know, you guys know my development on the other side of the tracks. That's, so this is great. That's what we want. So let's, we'll talk about this, but we really want to. You guys to do something with. Yeah, they have some three big grandiose ideas. They're going to annex all of that other part into their parks. I didn't know that. That was cool. I'm glad, I'm glad they're doing that. So we can tie, we have the equestrian with them and they're, it'll be, it'll be super cool. Um. So what that means yet, I don't have an answer for how we're going to tie to the park. Um, but these are not, um. Teeny tiny lots. They're anywhere between. Fourteen hundred to half acre lots, couple of one acre lots. It's kind of a mix, but it's not as tight of a cluster. I don't think that. Stagecoach. I don't think this is the area for that type of a cluster. This needs to be more of the. Maybe you just have to put a decent home on it and maybe put, some of you couldn't put it in the portion, but some of you could. Anyway, not the order, just to keep them in. So that stuff, of course, you love. It would make the upper split. The pond didn't stay or go. Stay. Okay, it is going to stay. Now, we're going to fill in the back half of it. Not the back half, sorry, about a back fifty feet. Just because it was built out to reach the, I had to take it so far to, so I had the right height and the right. The, to get the water to the end. The pump station's going clear up in the middle of the pond. So when we take this head gate out and everything, because we're going to. Where the fifteen inch pipe comes across here, we're going to tie into the front of that fifteen and evacuate all the rest of this. It's, it's, it'd be wasted and we're going to take the head gate out, take all the other stuff out and I'm sure I'll find somewhere to do that.
Thank you. It's a new water source for that. You've got enough water for those.
Finally shown there is also. I've got enough water and I think that Randy's team has enough water. But yeah, that, and that's what I had, I had worked out with Randy. So hey, I'm, I'm going to give them the pond. You become my, my water source. You, this is nobody that ran water better than me.
But it's hard to become part of that view. Put it second there.
I don't know how he wanted to work that. That's. Again, that's kind of up, up in the air now. We're not sure how it's going to work. Uh. My last instructions from the Marriott team was, hey, let's just keep going as if. My thing is change to get until we decide. That's kind of my last. But we'll see, you know, I would say, I'm going to touch you something. But we'll see how that, we'll, we'll see how that works. Um. That's kind of it. The, the, the kind of the basic explanation of. And what I'd like to propose.
Why are you asking for RE fifteen when the RE twenty-one, these are all coming out.
Some of them are a little smaller. They balance out the RE twenty. And I, I'd be willing to do that. I, I'll, it doesn't matter to me what.
I do that with you, probably. And I look through it. I look at the map while you go up there. I looked at it and I'm coming to, I think Charlie's pulling it up for us so that we can. See it, uh.
And I'd be okay with that too. They, it just was the master plan said if it brings sewer, they allow it to already. No reason. I mean, I'll. Do kind of like, well, this is my preliminary. I'm not going to go.
No, no, I get it. I just was curious.
Yeah, that, no reason, just that's what the master plan felt for.
One slot twelve. Is it just a, is it a five acre park or?
So that is the open strays for phase one. So I, unless I went back and redid all of it, uh, just again, I'll do a nice big open five acre. I, there's plenty around here.
And what's your plan for that? Like?
Uh, the plan, the guy that is buying this lot is going to turn it into a, like a riding. Yeah, for, for. Okay, sorry, not writing, a building. Nothing, but just anybody can use it. I think, I, I don't want to speak about it. That's, that's kind of the, what we've been discussing.
Oh, the.
Yeah. And that's why I had to say that now. Whatever the ordinance is, that's what we're.
Yeah, I was trying to remember what the ordinance is on that.
Why did you hit me under the table?
And, and I don't necessarily have a problem with the. I don't want to see anything smaller than that. Here, Nancy, you want to go on smaller, you know, with the fifty, uh. Off the stage coach.
Yeah. And I'm not, this is a concept plan. I'm holding between you and what's the business is not. If, if that's what you guys want, it's not. I'm okay with it.
No.
I don't, I, like, if your pond's going to be here, it's making sort of fun that I could be for the, the, like, we've got. Here and not this park filled by soul nerds about. Like the, I don't know, like up here and on that side you've got the pond. And that's why I asked about that, that corner lot and like their waves.
So let me just find a little deposit here.
Yeah.
Um, right here, this is the main canal.
Okay.
So if you come up here and I just put a road. Uh, more. I would have to lift it.
Yeah.
Way up, up, over the canal and then drop it. It would be. It'd be a road to nowhere until something did off the masthead, but. The clock to putting that in.
Okay. So maybe it's like one of these major roads we can focus now, but.
It goes over. Yeah, this is a distant road. And so. Instead of having to drive right here, you would come out, you'd come out. So it's not, you're not losing.
Okay.
A whole.
I guess that word, that word means of, uh. I mean, it's hard when you're rounded by a canal.
Yeah, our, our, uh, long range plan or the transportation plan would show, uh, this going over the canal. I think this is the only one, uh, in the area that would go over the canal because. The ones on either side already go over or around with now or whatever. So seventy-five hundred and then what's the next one down?
That, that's what, that'd be sixty-nine.
So sixty-nine, yeah, those go through. So, um.
But nothing in between is planned to go over the canal.
So this one would, is planning to go over the canal, but nothing else in between is planned to go over the canal. So this is seventy-one hundred west.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah. So seventy-one should be going over the canal.
Yeah, uh.
But it would end up going through the open stage.
Yeah, that's the long-term goal, uh, I guess, and for the, from the plan. It doesn't necessarily have to go.
Dedicated that.
Fully open then once we needed it there.
For open space, the best thing that can happen to that unless it turns into a park or something useful is for it to be a road.
Yeah, so, so leaving it open in the meantime. So I guess, just. I would just be concerned about the connectivity. So eventually, like here, having the opportunity to go and connect over here, somewhat, and then did grow, you know, connect. Somewhere over to, to having connections to these two sides, maybe not as many.
We stub this in here like.
Yeah, that I think would be a good idea.
And go through your pond though, if you did that, just.
Well, just stub up to this road going over.
Will there be some connection to the east?
Well, both of them. And so the pond's right there, but how high up does the pond go?
The pond goes, there's no. So this, uh, easement right here, I don't own it. I mean, it's an easement. I could never build on it. And you don't want to anymore.
No, but this, so just sorry, this area right here, I'm looking like, where is your pond? Is this, this whole thing is.
This is the whole one.
Okay, so the only concern would be, yeah, stubbing here and then if we need to mesh whatever, this area.
And I could, I could stub right here. Cause this pond comes right here, my headgate's right here, but I'm going to get rid of it all.
Okay.
If you guys wanted a connection.
It would be nice to see a, a connection to the east. I mean, just for future.
Yeah.
Definitely. That, that wouldn't bother me at all, just to do a connection there. And, and I would just. I wouldn't necessarily put the road in. I would just dedicate that.
Yeah.
Whatever and then. I mean.
Well, definitely was.
And I think something that was a try again. Your block.
How was pond? How? Real pond or? No, it's made for to be a real pond and right here, it's actually deep enough where you put fishing, hopefully stay alive, but.
So this is just spitballing, but it can, it's open straight. It has a small parking lot there.
Oh, that's the whole plan. And this has got a, I've already built a trail all the way around to right here. And all the way around to right here. I just haven't finished. I mean, it's a picture. Like you, I wanted a big enough to fit two horses, you know, passing. Not people Charlie, horses.
Like you will put the people scale, or horse scale is a good scale. I like it.
We put path right here. There's. So like, what if there's open space? I don't know what the rule are, but we have some type of parking lot, even if it's not for horse.
We can do something in this, this down here, open it up a little bit.
Cause if this guy buys it, it's going to be his, right?
But it still has, that's where I got.
I think you can actually purchase open space, correct? From the cluster subdivision?
So it can be individually owned.
Oh, it can be.
In the cluster.
Oh, I remember. I did like this. I remember. This was one of my. Can they boil on it?
Would it be useful to have it as a? I, I think it's a good idea, but I think it's too small. I think you need to come, come down along the canal. I think it needs to have some. At least some room for a stand she could use, kind of like. The way you're thinking about. I mean, you're going to load up a horse, you're going to drag her, you're going to unload the horse. You're just riding around. No, I'm thinking more parking lot for the rest of.
Like.
Everything, a little bit of everything. That's maybe still have it to where that road can go through if I have.
And then you park on either side.
What I was, what my. Vision of this is, is using Reese, Reese has a park as a park and I can pour your trailer in there. You can unload your horse. You're going to ride the arena. This is, hey, let's go to. Let's go to here and ride and walk around, go for a little horse ride around the park and come bang around the. The pond and come back. And if you're going to hit some stuff here or something, that. That's my idea of, oh, and this, this is pretty cool. Through the middle of the pond. I put a dike. That, then I dug out the middle of it and I'm going to do a bridge across. So a walking bridge, you can take a horse across and then it's going to be high enough where you could paddle board and then. So it'll be, uh.
But I think having some sort of facility up here and then the boat who got their own building, but.
Put in those, those fish that you cook here, so. And, oh, and, um. I put two islands.
A lot of those fish.
There were two islands that exist in here and I was going to eat, uh. On the islands that was solar. Solar panels and then that'll feed the aerators. So I'll have two aerators where we keep the pond aerated. So you aerate the pond. You get the fish ears and it sounds like a bad word, but it's not. There's some sort of chemical. It's an organic chemical you can put in. And again, I don't know. I just, somebody was, the guy was. I don't know what it is, but it would help with the mosquitoes and help it look there and not smell. That, that's what it was.
The algae.
Yeah. I think this could be a real, real cool development. And I happen to. You know, with seventy-one hundred, I own all the ground across the street. On the relative. So this all ties together with what I want to develop across the track. So. This, this means a lot to me to make it, you know, like, I'd like to figure and not just run the boat. Fixing this light with Felix.
I mean, I don't want any commissioners to chime in, but if, if this road right here, if, if you have this land. Next to the road through and you're planning to develop this pond and make this area accessory to the pond. Um, I think that could be negotiated as a contribution to the community if this is all public. And have that be like a parks kind of contribution. Um.
Five acres of giving up the Bowery and. And we have Reese.
Yeah, that's, that's, it'd be kind of a different, a different type of. Different technique. It allows us to get the road kind of. Street, you know, situated to.
And I'm not opposed to that. I would just throw out. If I was to put a Bowery in personally, I've got to put it in these parts.
Yeah.
That's just, it is, Reese Park is cool. They just spent a bunch of money. It's a, it's a nice, I'd rather, but again, I'll do whatever.
Well, maybe just fix that area as far as making sure there's parking and whenever we need it. For the pond.
If the park district is going to maintain it, why don't we let them discuss and decide what they want to do? Yeah, I mean, if, if we're going to.
I just, I'd rather not see that corner go private. That would be my concern.
Talking about the road going up, up and over or just curving?
Just curving around. This still is connected.
Yeah.
Through lots, twenty-eight.
Yeah, through lot twenty-eight and then through twelve, just so that it's, um. And then it needs to go through after top two eventually. So.
And I would. Into ground and let.
Yeah.
How, uh, if, if there was a street connection right there on that upper east-west road. Uh, and if it came to a, a T on the north-south road on the bar east side. Um. Is that enough space to get the grade, uh, up and over the canal? How, how much higher is the canal than the native ground that around it?
It's high. It's high. The best thing to do with that canal is to put a sub under. And just keep the, the, the road grade, raise the grade of the road a little bit, but leave the grade of the road alone and put the water underneath it.
Oh, like a siphon?
Look at how come they'll fight you. Cause they will, they will, but that's really.
No, I agree. It's, it would be.
Probably where all the towns going to this area.
Well, if you want to see how bad it is going to, canal going fifty-five hundred, look at that.
Yeah, man, right where it makes the curve.
Um, really.
Yeah.
Who's the canal company?
What's, uh, no, um.
I guess I went.
It's Warren, Warren. Actually, it's blank city.
Really?
It is. Yeah, the property's in Plank City. Yeah, but the canal is Warren.
It's Warren Southside.
Well, and so the Marriott's selling all that ground to the, to the north. So they developed that and they have the majority shares in that tradition coming as well. It was lots of shares.
When it comes to, uh, interrupting the street network, I, there's a couple of things I think it's okay to do, uh, for, like, uh, truck connections. Um, truck connections adjacent or trailways next to waterways tend to be a, a nice feature for communities. And if the last road you have to cross, once you've hit that trail, the, the better. So there's a, an opportunity, I think, to just rely on, it's, it's still pretty far distance between sixty-nine hundred and seventy-five hundred. Um, and so that really get comfortable with the idea that there's not going to be a street between those two, but maybe that's okay for. A nice, uh, recreation corridor along that canal.
What's the lot average? Where people on that works. Trade move lots.
They're.
They're all. Twenty-nine thousand. So seeing one, twenty-two.
That's kind of why I'd like to see maybe cut those maybe down just a little bit and extend that trail down along the canal, which goes along with what Charlie's saying. Because that's a perfect place for it. Yeah, I can see that. And then, and then if you continue with West, whoever, you know, develops West.
That's like, and East. Well, and there is that seventy-five wood easement right there. Do you want to, you want it on top of the canal or?
It's nicer on top so you can see, but it's now kind of, they'll fight that one.
It would look good. I already care.
But, well, it'd be, yeah, along, along the bar.
What we've done in the past is we've done, uh, we've. Both stuff like, like, get it's like on the bottom from the developer. And then if we can, before we start building it, um, get a canal company on board. Uh, then we get it up on the burn. Where it's as deep as it is there, uh, I could see why they have some concern. However, their liability is zero. We've already had a legal analysis of that. They just might not fully understand that their liability is zero. But they're identified. So if somebody fell in and drowned. Not that we should be planning for people to drown, but you find ways to help them not drown.
And then you come down like, Jen mentioned, you know, what side is their maintenance access? If maintenance road looks up on from that, looks like it's on that up other side, but that's some of the stuff to consider. They might make it on both sides.
Well, that, that's been a goal out there, having, so like, drive on both sides. Some of it, they keep it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's awful white. Did you cross that with an excavator? Yeah, you gotta be on both sides of it. Yeah. It's pretty. All right. You're on the right path. That's good. I'm glad you're straight enough.
I couldn't believe that happened.
Well, that, in that secondary street, that's, yeah. So are you going to put the first phase on the sewer as well and come up through there even?
So. I, I, I think, I've got to talk to Richard Jex.
Doesn't really.
Because. All the skeptics.
Oh, they're already been original.
With the, uh, um, at the median. If they can pressurize enough out of that and take it to, I just don't know. If they're going to take the black water, if they can replace a pump. And then pressurize the black water. There's plenty of space because behind phase one, there's. Plenty of room here. I have a big twenty-four people behind this side too. So. If that was the case and people wanted to help pay for it or some, I don't know how we would pay for it. But, but I could stub to it and be ready for it. That's not a problem at all. You won't have a problem paying for it after they see.
Have you had any conversations with Randy Giordano about possibly expanding their service to include secondary water?
Their meeting is at seven o'clock tonight.
To ask the same question?
I, I, I'm presenting this to. I, I, I'm presenting this to them tonight.
Okay.
If I don't make it, John can do it. If, if he's, you know, do it.
I think one of the best water planning things that we can encourage out there is for the. Corner water provider to also have a secondary water system. That they're operating.
They won't want to know.
There you say that's. I'd try that too, Charlie, if I keep getting shot down, so.
Yeah.
But I mean, if there was a company like, I mean, if you already work with Randy and something like Mountain, you want to commentate over, at least it's an established.
Yeah, exactly.
Company, I mean, they know, they, they're in the business, they're.
Right.
All over.
And I have three subdivisions and working with them to take over the secondary water. That's, I'm not that guy. I'll build it. But I'm not somebody I.
Yeah. Guys, have any other questions?
You have another meeting to get to, you better hurry.
And I'm applying to catch this thing. For four hours.
I'm going there like, yeah.
There's no way, let's go.
So I have another business in Oklahoma. That's what I wanted to do.
Plains law.
So smiling, yelp.
At four hours. That's the longest, I find all the time, that's the longest I've ever sat. On a trauma.
Then it was back by Friday.
Yeah, I was back.
I see you. On Friday, so. Wait, wait a minute. So, okay. We good?
So we got a full staff review that we'll need to do. We'll get it on, uh, not next week's agenda, but hopefully next month's agenda. For you guys to, to look over, but we still haven't done a full general plan analysis and all that yet, so since we've got all that done. We'll have it back in front of you guys in a public hearing.
And then I should be able to meet with the parks, party for them to get an answer and then what they want to do and. Again, I'll work with however you guys want us to construct this and the parks want us to construct it. Be fun.
I love it. I love how you're doing. I just like a little bit of access to a little bit more convenience off. Probably the next three hours here. As much as I, as much as I grant saying all the words.
I'll tell you what, you guys decide on how much time we take.
When I seen this tonight and I seen. Well, it's good, let's get it done. We keep, we keep hushing and getting close and getting close, let's just finish it, right?
And we have enough time tonight to actually do something of substance, that's good news.
Cause it's on next time's agenda too, I already seen, so the morning still out the night.
Yeah, let's get it. I know, uh. To get this, uh, get this done too, so hopefully we get that. Inferno pretty quick.
So yeah, if I, if I'm wrong here, Charlie. Good.
Can I hate you anyway? We have, we have gone over most of this stuff, so we haven't finished the form based stuff yet.
Right.
Um, but most of the other stuff we have finished. I told you I'm gonna take in the memo, I tell, I tell you I'm gonna take the supplemental stuff out. Uh, so we're not going to get bogged down and trying to get that stuff done. And even still, there might be some other things that the Ogden Valley is kind of a. Fastest molasses, um, and so we may even move some things forward. Um, that they don't have to review just to get them through the system. So. Kind of see, see how we want to divide and conquer. Okay, so first thing on the list, what do we have? First on the agenda.
I think it's the. Get our general plan, the general plan more.
Okay.
And then.
Okay, so, um, Sarah and I had a little conversation just before the meeting and she mentioned on dark sky stuff. How would you guys feel if? The dark sky ordinance wasn't applicable until ten P M. And then from ten P M to six A M, it is. Does that seem like a pretty? Simple compromise, uh.
In the commercial type of, or?
Anyway.
I mean, if we got to meet dark sky, your lights are going to be the same whether it gets dark at. Five o'clock or get dark at ten.
Yeah, so I mean downward directed, all that kind of stuff. So yeah, I guess mostly it would apply.
In those cases. Your sunset. Uh, your sunsets at nine in the summer, right?
Well, my thought is just if you turn your lights off at ten P M. Then you don't have to worry about kind of lights you have and then if people want to see stars after ten P M.
I'm not turning my lights up at ten P M because it's more of a security issue than it is.
Well, that question, the other concern with dark sky, um. I've been, I, I understand the, the, um, the logic. I've read a lot of the reasoning for dark sky that. You know, we have a false sense of security with lifetime with, well, I have a sister that lives in Scottsdale. And I find it very difficult to navigate the commercial sectors of Scottsdale. It, it's darker. It is hard to see the signage, it's hard for people. So it, particularly in commercial zones, I, I really don't like. The dark sky, so I figured commercial zones, if they are allowed to have whatever lighting they want, but just turn it off at ten P M, so it's not affecting residential. If they have a. Something that's open past ten P M, then they just need to make sure it's dark side compliant. After ten P M, but for most commercial businesses, um. That, that wouldn't be hard. I. I asked my husband, I, I kind of went through the signage requirements, the lighting requirements, and I said, okay. Would you build? Restaurants? In an area that has some kind of, um, ordinances? And he's like, head, no, I would. I would avoid it. It would be too difficult. I need to have a lit prime. I can't do the manual signs.
So I, I agree, I, I. Know the tip, the sign and.
It, it totally fits the valley. I get the valley, I want to drive to Swallow, where you don't need a popping sign, but. West Weaver is much more spread out. And if we want to make the small, I mean, there's only a few commercial zones, but if we want to make those zones functional. Uh, I just don't think the, the laws that work or the ordinances that work in the valley, they are going to attract the kind of. Commercial customers. That people frequent in West Weaver. I mean, it's not the boutique store kind of area.
That's her nice way to say.
Not like the valley. Dress up the pride, entertain their, you know, that's what, that's what worked in Ogden, so. So the ten P M rule would be more commercial, but even residential, if you've got your neighbor that likes to have their jellyfish lights every day of the year, you can be like, ten P M. They're off. And so, um, so for security, yes, after ten P M, you put in whatever dark side clients. But your overall lighting doesn't necessarily have to be dark. I, I would do it everywhere for a reason, so that we don't have to worry about whatever.
I don't know.
That could be possible.
That's my next, it's an enforceability of it though.
None of it's very enforceable. Ten P M is easier if your neighbor. You, your neighbor hasn't complained for any of it to be enforced and, you know, all takes a photo officer come over and say, hey, you gotta have your lights off at ten. I think that's easier than change outfits light entirely or don't have your Christmas light permanently at home.
No, I, I mean, I, I see, I like your logic, I know where you're going. Oh, yeah.
It all is. But I'm, I'm really concerned about commercial zone with this kind of ordinances. A little bit concerned about residential. I would. Love to write a whole twenty page report on when your jellyfish lights should be on, but I just. Whatever day, holiday, you think it is.
You know, the thing that's bothered me about this is. In ten years. Till we look at completely different.
Iconically.
And I think is, let's not make this thing quite so hard.
Complicated.
Yeah, I mean, really. But the thing I would give in ten years' time, maybe nobody wants any light at all. But let's just make it so that we can get by this because to be quite frank with you. This is starting to bore the hell out of me. Pretty much okay with it, cause I can't use a telescope anyway. But, uh, you know, let's go make it hard, let's just do it. Whatever it is, let's just do it.
All right, Charlie, what are we doing?
I'm still not sure, right?
Running the plan in the upper valley, right?
Yeah, no, it's not what our conclusion was last time, last time.
Our, our, what the plan currently states is what they were currently state. We left Ogden Valley can be dark shadow, but we didn't do anything down here, right?
We didn't do anything down here, but.
We didn't do anything, but you know, it's not a good idea to shut your lights off at nine or ten o'clock.
Not at the last meeting.
So to me.
Like, yeah, years ago. Years ago.
Correct.
General plan.
We, we left Ogden Valley can have a dark shadow, we left it along down here.
Just, just the intrusive lighting after ten P M, so we would, there was definitely still lighting, but only we worried about dark sky lighting. After ten P M, so that. You do, especially in those more dense areas, not looking for the. And. The neighbors bright lights.
Okay, it's still gonna happen. I mean, I don't expect the, the, the dairy. The, the lights.
But that just has to be. In the middle.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to pick the light up, put your name on it, maybe we're putting it on there for a lot of.
No one complains, it's never been something.
Our light culture is exempted in this.
Been on the pressure. Many years of the yard later, the farm bed on the pole, I mean, it's just now it's been.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a. I mean, in my eyes, it's the other, you're trying to keep that rural building around out there and.
So for you, the lights are the rule.
I, I like, I like seeing the, the light pole in the barnyard and the.
I don't mind it either, right?
What, the barn here in Little Lake?
Well, you're right.
You have. It's where it's.
I'm pretty sure when the barnyard goes the way you get.
Apparently, no, we left, when we did this, what, probably four years ago. And we left through that Ogden side of the dark. The western realm. I'm feeling like that's probably about.
I know when somebody wants the dark sky compliant, their lights, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's usually done for yourself.
Relief.
Some sort of. I'm still gonna listen. So I mean, that's, uh, so that's, that's part of the reason why we're having a conversation.
Or even like. I don't know that we've really got a lot of community good for that. Did we? I, I didn't, in meetings, I had to see a lot of people jumping around.
We did a couple of years back.
Oh, when you did it for.
Yeah, and I don't know that that was revisited. We just kind of picked up with that information and ran with it. And we didn't get pushed back on having it in there, but maybe that's because nobody knew.
But I, I think a lot of it is, I don't think people understand what it is. To what extent is this dark guy? Yeah, they don't want to see light, they want to see the stars, but still, to what extent? I mean, what we, is what's in place right now? Sufficient to cover. What we've done.
In, sorry, is what Ogden Valley has.
No, what we have, we never count, you don't.
And the general plan?
We don't have, we don't have.
Yeah, nothing at all.
Well, we have, Fletcher Code says you gotta comply with outdoor lighting of the Ogden Valley. Out west. So just kind of jogs up by reference.
Well, it, it, it is a problem putting it in a subdivision. So some guy builds a hundred houses out there on forty acres. Is there a problem having dark sky there? I don't think there's any problem at all. Cause we're talking about mainly commercial and security.
Depending on your level of security in the neighborhood, the dark, it is, it is dark.
Well, it's dark, but the thing I would is, I don't. I don't envision them shutting the lights off in the neighborhood. I'm vision of being on. In the night, streetlights. Place them down. Top of them. Yes, if there's some empty lines.
The only rule would be like holiday lighting, um, in the residential area. Where if you put this in and it says you have jellyfish, you have to tear it out if your neighbor says they don't like.
I know. Christmas tree lights lighting your house, really?
I know.
And just because the general plan says, you know, encourages dark side lighting, maybe now you don't feel it's a time, it's just like a rezone. If you're not in, because now you don't feel it's the times. So if you don't feel, you know, it's a time to. Then, then it's totally fine.
There might be an hour better.
I mean, I think there will be a time, but maybe now's not. I know we've spent a lot of time on it. There's a lot of, there's a lot more important.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
And, and that's what's, that's what's, I mean, I feel the same way, we does. It's, it's starting to bother me. We need to move on. There's, there's way more bigger fish than this.
And if Walmart wants to come out there, we're probably gonna let them have some lights. Costco.
One matter, rest of it's gonna use it, right? Like, and. General population probably not have a strong dark light. And I can say, when I lived in Roy, we had somebody try to break into our house at the. Roy's Police Department was the person, they said, right, well, how come your lights are not, like, you know, outside all night long? That was their first safety warning. Whether that's what we really should be doing or not, but so if you go and tell a resident that they can have their lights on at night, that's their bill. Security, I guess, their safety, then it's gonna come from.
Well, see, I don't have a problem with that release, but if the light's facing down, the night's not gonna flood it, and I'm a frozen drop, I don't want a core.
I don't know, I saw that movie, Wayne, I mean, it was a great movie. So I would make sure a couple of things are clear.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Why don't we just do like it says in one oh eight sixteen eight C? And put together this dark sky committee. And it says right in here that they will, and it lists out who the members would be. And it says the committee's purpose shall be to advise the county on dark sky best practices, implementation strategies, incentive programs. Public, private partnerships and anything else. Anything that seems necessary. Why don't we put a committee together out there that, the people that's really gonna affect the commercial businesses? You know, we let, not that we have a lot, but. I mean, we're all sitting here kind of shooting from the hip because we're not in the commercial. We don't, I don't feel. Cause you made a good point. It, it could be, I, I don't think now's the time, but we're not ahead of it now. Look, it was coming in, we, we've got to head the bullet at a time.
Right.
I, I mean, I agree with you, Wayne, it might be, you know, ten years, it's gonna become something completely different, but. At least I would feel good if that happened because we're getting the voices from the people of the facts. Cause I mean, it, it's not gonna affect me. Mine's exempt for agricultural. It's not gonna affect, you know, any of the homeowners that are out there now because they're exempt till the retrofit comes in, so let's. Let's talk to these people, you know? Maybe, yeah, I, I think that's where we go with this. Where, where are you looking at that? Page fifty five.
Can you bring that up?
Fifty five, uh, what's the line number?
Your line numbers don't match my line numbers.
It's, uh, nineteen forty eight. On these.
And. Okay, I recall. So that's one, that's a group that we haven't even set up for the Ogden Valley yet. I know it's something that they're talking about.
I think that's a great idea. Is a good idea, but.
Yeah.
They would have to totally educate them while we're talking, you know?
Well, but I, I think they're gonna know better than even what we're discussing here.
He's going through and getting surveys.
Lots of.
These things existing until we have a better idea of where we're headed.
How about I come back with this, uh, instead of this lighting ordinance, I come back with, it's not an outdoor dark sky lighting, it's just an anti-glare ordinance. Uh, there's no limitation on how much light you can have, what color of light you can have, uh, for the duration of the light that's on. You just shouldn't be able to see the bulb. Glaring in your eyes.
But that, the jellyfish, like it's just the Christmas light. My neighbor to come over and say, you. Per county ordinance, you have to tear that off your house, you know?
Well, so if we were just to say this and then maybe carve an exemption out for, that's, that's how this, that's how this whole ordinance started. We said, let's go with those four, well, what about these then? What about these then? What about those then? And so then we just started exempting things left and right, then it got complicated. Necessarily complicated.
You can rewrite it today. Don't be a pain in the, pain in the ass.
Actually, how about we just rewrite the entire language code and that's the only thing.
I mean, I, I, well, if you have the talks about holiday or festive lights. I mean, I, I like what you put there.
It just says it's gotta be taken down at least once a year.
But then are we getting into the whole?
At the jellyfish.
They're not busy, uh, that's a whole mess. I think you're getting into.
Yeah, that's that. It's people put those up. On all the time. Most people don't, they just turn them on like, oh. There are some people.
Some people have just read the Christmas lights on all year.
Yeah.
Sounds like you should either just get rid of it or. Sounds like you should either just get rid of it or maybe just dumbify it down or it's. Super simple. Come back and then build it back. But then I just, but like Chuck said, I mean, we were there and then we went to the exemptions and now we're where we're at today. So I like.
Well, part of why we're as complicated as this ordinance is is because of.
Yeah, we've been making it so much simpler.
Our our original take on this was like three pages max.
It's like, you don't see the light source. Can you, can you?
Drive by inspection.
You give us that simplicity for one, and we just thought that.
I was gonna think in the back of my mind, regardless of what you guys said you wanted today, I'll send that back justice thing if you were okay. So yeah.
Light source is the. That is dark sky, like that is the complication of dark sky right there is seeing the light. It's easier said than done, I guess, I think. I think most of the light we want to exempt. Must be the light source. So is there a way to say, just can't direct the time in your neighbor's window? That's the only thing that even matters is that it's lighting that your neighbors says large. I don't know.
Uh vehicles driving uh glare, stuff like that, or is it just permanent fixtures? I mean, would you rather?
Colors telling to go away. On your headlights, because it won't melt the snow, and then they cover and you can't see them. I didn't ask the question right. Do you wanna be able to see glare from these lights while you're on your vehicle?
Well, it sucks.
I don't, I don't know that it.
This is simple one have that.
Well, maybe I'm not.
It's a simple one doesn't have it in it, let's just leave it out. Let's go back to.
The simple version would just be down directed, fully shielded, so nobody can see your light smoke.
What problem with that?
Well, that is the problem. That is everything I've said.
Because there's not gonna be nobody who plays about it out there. People have biggest light in the world. It it's not gonna put much more downward light. Around the house, but one that's focused down. That's all I'm saying.
So I'm, I guess I'm confused with where you're going, but Sarah, I mean, so like they're saying the L E D light, because that's the light source. You can't see that. I'm thinking like a light bulb in an actual light. Both both of those things. That's Sarah's concern, is the L E D flash light, you are seeing the light.
And commercially, when you have a lit, I mean, all the things.
Well, that's got a cover on it. I'm not seeing the source, but it could be an L E D or it could be a.
But we, you will be able to see the source, but even if it was faced outward. Anything that's faced outward would not comply with that ruling. So I think I would say go in what Brent said, leave it the way it is. Put together a committee and table it, yeah, for another.
Get 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 the committee, because by the time we get to that. Then we might get some good information on it, but at the same time, when we have a committee. I think we need to have a dark sky specialist come and talk about it. So that we kind of know what it is and spend a bunch of novices sitting around this table. I'm trying to do the best thing. I get it. Good thing of it is, is you know, this is the third, the third go around. And there is a paper fish, right? So let's just make it so we can move on.
Okay, let's do it. We'll get there. Okay. Okay, so we haven't touched the sign code at all uh to my. You guys remember?
I didn't expect it, because I know you like dark chocolate, but I wasn't sure if those were the dark ones at all.
I'll be watching.
I know we, no, we've briefed on signs. I just don't remember going through. So I just wanna make sure you guys were comfortable with what you saw.
Sixty three, fifty seven.
Fifty seven of seventy eight, right?
Uh sixty three, don't believe his numbers. We're on page sixty three.
On seventy eight, one that's.
Signs, right? Different page seventy eight.
Oh, here.
I thought would be signed to that last time too.
We we may have, if you guys are okay with signs, then let's go.
I mean, we're gonna have to get something stronger than that chocolate.
Okay, you're playing in my language. If there aren't any concerns or issues with signs.
I I hate dogs, but they're mostly related to the adjustment that makes the dark sky compliant. And then just the height limitations I'm concerned about next to where we're having legacy go through. So.
Well, I I I do have a question on it, and I don't know what it's still there, but down in Salt Lake City, when I go south, go golf. In the middle of the early hours, there was a light down there about probably thirty feet wide, fifteen. And it would just pierce your eyes. And that's the only kind of sign I don't like.
That was on the sign. So I think even that is regulated. You dot has some very specific requirements. It's just somebody's photo sensor wasn't working. Um which, so sign lighting right now, the way that this works is only exterior lit, so not interior lit. You'd have to have like a doos neck or whatever uh uh and then if we don't do dark sky stuff, then the fully shielding, fully shielded wouldn't matter as much. Um with that in mind. The height of the signs that um. Are allowed out in these areas, they're relatively short, about fifty feet. I think is the max height. Now, once we get freeway out in that area, we're definitely want some something taller.
Even on twelve street, just in the commercial areas, I would want the sign to be able to be as tall as the building next to it. I don't think it'd be intrusive if it's the same height as the building that it's next to. Um you won't be seeing it from other areas other than the on that street. Um but only for maybe just for the commercials only, that um the drive, what is it called? The. Vehicle accessible commercial zones, I I I would want a higher sign and then. In general, I I think it'd be important to have electronic sign. That limits the um. How often they can change what's on their sign. The what the. Yeah, and um so it wouldn't be like flashy, no flashing or moving things on it, just how often you can change what's on it. Um like schools have on their school, schools are exempt anyways, but if schools can do it and they need it, then I'm certain our commercial. Facilities need to be able to electronically change their sign and just limit. So yeah, still not moving or animated, just change the message. Oh, and I think there's a freestanding sign, everything would have to be timbers. I don't think, everything else gave an exception, but for some reason, always we said freestanding full time.
Freestanding, I think it's a conservation.
And also, oh, I see, yeah, because that's been in the conversation, conservation, okay. Then that's it. I saw that now. Okay, that's fine.
So right now, it says the ground signs for single lot shall not exceed eight feet high. And if it's a multiple lot, it says twelve feet, oh, excuse me, fourteen feet.
Uh where yet?
Section two A and B underground.
So um section one ten two eight?
One ten two five.
Five, there we go.
Two A and B.
One ten two five. Okay, A, commercial, non-residential. B.
Oh, sorry, go up. No, I'm leading you straight. So right there under two ground signs. But it says there shall not exceed eight feet in height, twelve feet away.
So here's a couple of things uh to think about here. When you get uh multiple businesses in quick succession, right, you're gonna have multiple signs in succession. If everybody is allowed to do the same kind of sign um and trying to attract the same type of attention. Um and so you've got. Purposefully underinflated regulations for single use signs. Whereas there's taller allowances if you've got signs that are joined up by multiple businesses um and doing like a a. What are we calling it here? Multiple building lot sign essentially. Um and so that's probably one of the reasons why we're looking at eight for this single lots. Um but you wanna go higher, let's go higher. In fact, I think what I heard from Sarah was maybe instead of fourteen feet, maybe this can be as tall as the building that are maximum height.
Vehicle oriented commercial only. I think anywhere outside of that, we wanna keep it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Well, I mean, as I look at the single lot, so I look at, say, right there, that's one big lot, twelve and forty seven hundred. That could potentially be one big lot grocery store or something like that. Are they, they're stuck at a eight foot sign?
Are they vehicle oriented commercial?
It just says ground sign. Yeah, the commercial and other. I don't know, I think it needs to be more color, just in in all commercials, though, why just vehicle oriented?
Well, uh it really just comes down to how many signs you wanna see up there. Um sign clutter is a really big issue, and you know sign clutter when you see it, but you don't realize it's a problem. That the private market drives very fast until you're in a community that has poor signage.
Being involved in Kent's coming into Plain City on the municipal side, the sign was one of the biggest hot topics we negotiated through when that store was coming. And that all was around sign. So I think if we don't allow it, I think. I I think it's gonna be shooting us in the foot for future.
Don't allow it to be taller.
No, to let them be taller, yes, because Kent says more vehicle oriented.
That would be.
Twenty fifth street would be more pedestrian ride. And in those areas, you probably wouldn't want. Take away from character of the area. Well, I'm just like, just like on the form base that's being, you know, we talked about, kind of proposed over there on on nine headed. South and forty seven. West, that's gonna, that's gonna be buildings pretty much out of sight.
You don't have any room for it.
Yeah, so there's no room for sign, so probably nothing will be about there.
Yeah, and that was what my thought exactly was that area, you know. I didn't think, you know, if it's pedestrian oriented, there's not gonna be a. I mean, like twenty fifth, there might be a sign coming off the building, actually, you don't have freestanding.
But but for something, you know, like a chance or Cal Ranch or whatever. Yeah, where there's gonna be kind of a big open area for parks. They're gonna want some bigger sign.
And then naturally, in those areas, we'd have bigger lots and that will drive down the clutter.
Yeah, in fact, even if you do get commercial um infill at the street level, so out in those parking lots. Walmart's gonna wanna have a sign that's taller than those front buildings, so that you can see it as you're going down the road.
Right, well, and then normally whoever owns those, those subdivisions, basically those commercial subdivisions. They've usually got one great big sign and then whoever the main character is, they're on top, and then you've got all the others listed kind of down below.
Yep.
Succession.
So that's um to be, that's the intention to be right there. Uh. The ground sign for multiple building lot shall not exceed uh somebody feet. We say multiple building lot, but maybe we say multiple business.
You know, would it, would it be okay to have something basic like this and then just negotiate this?
So.
I really think science should be negotiated.
If you really want the business to be there, yeah, however. If the business has the opportunity to come and come easily and quickly by getting the permits, knowing what's expected of them. You know, there's that challenge. So if the business wants to be there, they wanna be an anchor and the community wants the business to be there, there's gonna be a negotiation that goes on anyway. But all the other smaller companies, they're not gonna wanna make a guess on where they possibly go pending negotiation of a sign.
Maybe you have something as restrictive as this language, but have a clause in there that it can be adjusted for a development agreement. And and then give some flexibility down the road.
Forty seven and twelve street, you're gonna want something totally different than you're gonna want over on. Yeah, on branches, like what you're having over there versus here, and like you're saying, oh, it can be fourteen feet and then twelve feet, but really maybe on. Postory, it needs to be bigger than that, so.
You want a thirty five foot sign on twelve street and.
Cause the grade of the ground or where, I don't, stupid hard to say this is what you get. I really think the big sign will only be that scary in the vehicle or. Personally, I can't see that anywhere else.
Because if you're walking, you're gonna be doing this to try and see the sign.
That's all vehicle oriented.
Bang in your highway, that highlight only get allowed in the vehicle oriented commercial, right? Because that's taller than the.
Gas station only allowed in vehicle oriented?
They're not only allowed, there's just different regulations for them.
But they could go in a commercial zone, but it's not vehicle oriented.
It's true.
I'm not. I was looking at the form base code, but it's it's pretty limited. It it wouldn't be in an area where.
Completely separate than where we're at for that, where we're talking to this. Well, it was for that zone and that's where.
But the sign code would apply to the form base as well, so I I think it's worked well to discuss.
I think the form base code needs its own discussion of the signs.
Yeah.
And that's why we're setting that code, because it's separate from that, right?
It's so we do have a section in the form base that says signs are obligated to follow whatever's in this section. And then we do have some maybe carve outs to do to some of the.
You take care of it.
We'll we'll call it up and we'll see it today. A gas station that's in a uh pedestrian oriented component of a of a form based on, for example. They're not getting a big sign.
I don't see a a wide gas station owner putting themselves in a vehicle, I mean, a pedestrian oriented.
Right, I mean, they're gonna wanna. So they're gonna wanna go to the most prominent, most obvious intersection, that's right there, and if it's already occupied by a gas station, go to one of the four corners. Or three corners, and if that's already, then they'll go to the next um block up. So in other words, if we get plenty of gas stations right there. Uh forty seven hundred and twelve street, then maybe the next best for them is nine hundred and twelve street. Some eventually. But if they do come to that corner and they meet all the requirements of the corner, it's pedestrian oriented area. They could probably go there, it's just in some cases, why? Why? Why would they even try? If if they can get something down by twelve street and get a big sign, not have to worry about it. So, yeah, I I think it's okay if you could fit a gas station in that pedestrian oriented area and it's designed for pedestrians. And you'll have cars coming in and going, but.
So how do we put it in there? Cause I like what you said there, Rover, about negotiated through the development area, because. Being involved in there, it's, that is a big point that is gonna be in. I don't wanna say that, you know, depending on the type of business, fourteen's enough, because it might need to be more. But without knowing the type of business that's coming in, I don't like, I don't like regulating it that far.
In the. Okay. Anything that we have in the code can be modified or changed through development agreement. We can make it explicit.
You can always do that.
Yeah.
But it is nice to have that interest in their awareness. Yeah, so if somebody actually comes and does their homework, looks at the code before they decide they're gonna do something.
Sarah might.
We got a developer dream and I already working there. Okay, so um just revisiting again, if it's a single business sign, so a single business owner, talking about height of a. Uh think about driving down twelve street, I mean. I I pass uh the one that always sticks out to me is doxy chiropractic, because there's two of them. And I can't even tell what the difference is between the two, doxy chiropractor versus doxy chiropractic. Um there's all probably five feet tall.
Two chiropractors.
I just gotta think two brothers.
And I get that for that particular business, but I still think this whole thing about the one single building lot is gonna get us, because there's gonna be big boxes that come on one building lot that's gonna restrict them to that.
I'd say, okay, I see what you're saying. So I'm just asking, is eight okay with just one business on one lot? Any concerns over the height of?
I think, I think that's just fine, because then if we add the statement in there.
It can be negotiated.
It can be negotiated through the service or excuse me, through the development agreement. Then they can come and get something bigger, better, better, whatever they want.
Yeah, perfect.
And we could also have, just come back to the planning commission, showing how it meets the character of the area.
I, I think that's a good idea, yeah. There's a counter on the end, and then look at who's around there and go from there.
That's a really good idea. If it would have come to. If it came to you guys, from a discretionary perspective, we would still need to do a development agreement. And so it'd be voluntary on both sides, but at the very least, we can give you a, to talk to the developer and start an negotiation. So there's a way we can do it. Any kind of, any kind of discretion you build into the code, you gotta make sure there is an element of black and white, otherwise we start getting into our arbitrage.
I would say that it's.
Well, the black and white shows the integrity of the code, so I'm good with that, and that's what you want. But then beyond that, if there's, if that doesn't meet what, what an applicant might want, it can be, you know.
Okay, so I asked about the eight for single, and now we're back on to fourteen feet for multiple businesses on a lot or a sign that applies to multiple businesses and multiple lots. What I heard was maybe fourteen isn't enough, but maybe fourteen is a fine fallback? Is that what I'm hearing? Fourteen's a fine fallback, and if they're coming in after higher, we look at it on a case by case basis.
I think you just put a, an E in there that catches that, there's a catch up for that whole area.
So I have a question that I'm gonna ask with hesitation, so I'm trying to. What is the problem with the animated signs? Like, why, why is that an issue?
It's distracting. You're right, catches that, if you start reading it.
Stop doing the story.
At the meeting, at the meeting, that's perfect. You took the rest of these two hours, let's go home.
So from a community perspective, right, when you start seeing flashing and dancing, I mean, the whole point of a sign like that is to get your attention. And then at how, where do you start putting limits in? We all know of that one, uh, uh, community that never started putting limits in, they were also run by mob bosses for a long time. And I already brought it up, and all it is is just TVs as you're driving down the road. And so where do you start putting those, those limits and thresholds? Just close your eyes.
No, I was thinking of Brent's barn, the arrow sign, you know, we talked about before.
Eat at Brent's?
Yeah.
What you cooking?
I'm in barn grill.
Did you say barn and grill? Perfect, no, I like it, that barn and grill. Okay, so let me put a note in here.
You know what they call them, the street easy.
I'm, I'm a little afraid if we put figure heights are allowed by development agreements. Ogden Valley Planning Commission's gonna freak out, not realizing that that's already the default, but let me see what we can.
Sign height can be negotiated through development agreement. Not say bigger, just say sign.
But even for you.
I need this.
The reason we wanna drink. Maybe if Ogden Valley would drink a little bit.
And automatic increase sign height for the vehicle oriented commercial zone, so they can come in and know that they can go as high as their building, and then the negotiated height will be for anyone that's in the gray area.
Yep, so I got, I got this right here. So, and I'm not doing, I'm not writing vehicle oriented, I'm just saying along an arterial, so minor arterial or major arterial. Sign maybe as tall as building height, we can go. Or taller if by.
But taller by development agreement, cause most of those buildings are like thirty-five feet high, forty foot tall sign, it's tall, I know.
Okay, but that's what they want, they want their sign height.
But they know they can only get thirty-five.
Oh, they negotiated and Kent signs is taller than the building and that was, you know, that was their big win.
Okay.
Well, and regardless. Irregardless, they can't.
Well, I just know my husband was really excited when they approved to his astronomical sign height, and he didn't think they approved. He would have settled for that, but they said yes.
It was a very hot topic, it was about two meetings worth of negotiations.
For and against, or just mostly against?
Against, but happy North Dogness. Years, Bill Haller. Associated food. That was the most interesting thing I've ever been a part of, because Kent didn't. It was associated food, associated everything. Nope.
Everybody hated it until they built it, now everybody loves it.
Like, we don't care, we're just glad to have a store closer.
They didn't want it, everybody hated it, no.
Wait, they don't have a list, that, that petition that was submitted against it, they don't have a poster on the door that says, everyone allowed except these.
All I know is this city was very lucky, it wasn't something like Walmart, because that it. And did exactly what they wanted, they was very worth it.
Women need to. And frequency of change. I've gotta get back in and find out what the illumination threshold is. So with electronic change copy signs, as long as it's not animated, it just is allowed to rotate every, how long did you think?
Six seconds is the standard from almost the areas.
Okay, I know. And then those same kinds of signs, much to your concern, Wayne, is it's gotta have a photometric sensor on it, so it can sense what the ambient lighting is, and it cannot be a certain threshold above it. City of St. George actually bought a little laser illumination reader, where they pointed at any given light source, and they could tell you how many rooms is coming back to them, so. But don't use the sign, you'll never get out of that building again. All right, anything else in the sign code that, other than height and change copy, that you'd like to have more directly addressed? Holy crap, we're done. Yeah, with this one. I wanna make sure something is clear to you guys, and maybe this isn't going to be applicable if the lighting code isn't gonna apply. The, a direct artificial light source includes a transparent or translucent material that the light is traveling through, if that material is intended to spread that light. And so when you think about an internally illuminated cabinet sign, that whole thing becomes the direct artificial light source. The, the white lens that you have over the LEDs here, that lens becomes the direct artificial light source. So that's how that's defined. So when we say a shield, it cannot be transparent or translucent or transparent light in any way, basically. What that translates over to on signs is Barney's is both backlit and internally lit. So in an internally, or if we restricted that internal illumination, the red internally lit wouldn't be lit. It would just, if they, if they wanted that red to be there, they would have to do something on the outside.
What's wrong with those sub-three?
I, I'm telling you. Yeah, this is the way the ordinance would work, is that you wouldn't be able to have internal illumination in your chat, in your.
The, the ones with the internal, if they, if they don't have a colored glass over them, that shields that, if it's more clear, it's in your face, it's bright.
No, and I get that, I like that it's covered, and yeah.
So here, you've just got the halo effect in the back, right? So Barney's didn't have the semi-transparent red, which is black, it would, and this guy wasn't what it is, it would be in compliance.
There's, there's a sign where there was, I've been that way for a while, but on eighty-nine, coming up on seven hundred north. On the, the northwest part of the intersection, so this is you're coming up to Ogden Clinic there. A little bit back from that, there's some businesses there, and a bunch of apartments or townhomes there as well. And there's one that's right there on the street that is, is clear. Internally lighted and it's clear and it's very bright when you come when you're driving, you're on eighty-nine, you know, so pretty major road.
Yeah.
Traffic's moving pretty fast, especially it's a light green, and it is very distracted.
Yeah.
So only, only on that kind of a like a twelve street corridor where the speed limit's a little bit higher. I'd be more concerned about that, other than that, and as long as, and as long as they're using a color, some sort of a color of glass or filter in front of it, I don't know that it has too much.
I'd probably just put them under the same as the all the signs that are the back, backlit, just the brightness, just have the brightness.
So, okay, that's what you're saying, good.
And then you can do whatever you want, but this is the brightness, it could be so.
Lighting, to be greater than. That means is that as soon as that really, really bright sign next door goes, and all the photo sensors ramp up and then all the other signs automatically turn up.
Guys, there wasn't there just a value, can you just put, it was Kelvin, just put it, Kelvin was kind of hard, but.
Yeah.
Or lumens or.
Kelvin was the color temperature, yeah, the lumens was, so there's a limit of, I think it was seventy-five lumens per square foot sign, which is actually pretty bright.
So we could just do that, limitation, but not a percentage, it's just a flat.
And the reason why they were okay with that is because everything was externally illuminated, so it gave a little bit, so the external illumination gives a little bit more of a classic charm to it, I think. If we were to go with that same amount of light on the inside of a box sign, it would be really dry.
Well, something that's reasonable on the inside, whatever you see in other codes, because like, there are, I mean, UDOT, what is UDOT allow? Just go with whatever UDOTs.
Yeah, let me, I'll look up, I'll look up what the UDOT standard is along the premise. Actually, probably I already have it in my research. A little bit on the form base then, unless anybody else had anyone else, anything else they wanted to talk about? So on the lighting.
Don't get that one.
Now we're going to form base. I'm glad you're thinking.
Starts, starts over after seventy-eight, and then form base is one, we keep going back.
Four and the four sixty-three.
And we did all the use table.
Not all of them.
I thought we got.
I've got a, you know, I've got a comment up beside you, said needed review here.
Okay, sixteen.
You guys just started this a year later.
This is what I have on sixteen.
I think I've got, so. Four dash two dash three point one one zero, that where you guys are?
Yep.
Okay. Services, so, as you can see here, not a lot of rocket science went into this, just trying to figure out what uses are gonna be impactful to the neighbors versus what uses aren't impactful, so, for example, large household item repair, that might be a little bit more impactful in terms of deliveries, parcel services and all that, pickup, drop off. But small household item repair, I don't know, people still take coasters to get fixed, and you should just be buying a coaster, but you know, you wanna go get your fix, your coaster fixed, fine, as long as you can carry it in, it's small.
Been here for a while, I gotta look right up.
So government institutional. BNI, vehicle oriented commercial is VOC, mixed use commercial is NUC, multifamily residential, small lot residential, medium lot residential, large lot residential, rural residential, and state lot residential. All right, thank you. So, and just brief recap, mixed use commercials intended to be as walkable as it possibly can be with commercial opportunities on, on the street level, you go, you park a car, you get out, you explore and experience your community even during snowy days, and then go get, get back in your car and get or go upstairs to your house, whichever it is. Vehicle oriented commercial allows all of that, but it also allows a lot more intrusive meetings, like gas stations and car washes and car sales lots and stuff like that, so you can still see a lot of these kind of pedestrian oriented types of things, it's just gonna be more pedestrian vehicle conflict in these areas. And so we wanna design these areas a little bit more vehicle oriented, and the government institutional is all of the above, it's just most of the standards are with, with government institutional. So, since you've all had, I don't know, like, what, six weeks to get through all this, and everybody has?
I've been stuck every other part, lighting.
Okay, I don't think there's a tremendous amount of rocket surgery that goes into this. So if you see any things, any pieces that need to be changed.
So I have some questions, are we okay with this table?
So what about gathering facilities? Why don't we allow it in the larger lots too?
Indoor facility, rental clubs, private groups, parties and organizational groups.
Well, there's a lot of them taking place in, in the larger lots, they're going out and building them in barns and turning barns into wedding venues. So.
Just like my friend's wedding.
Yeah, like it started at that and then it's grown to.
It's actually grown into Rossins.
Well, that's what I think of, Rossins is just down the road.
They're in proper city boundaries, so we don't, they're not within my realm, but still, that piece is, everything on fifty-one hundred over to oh yeah, that's over to the Mariana Rossins there, yeah.
Yeah, so I thought about this.
I mean, hell.
So my concern is parking, they have parking provided, and if their neighbors are happy with all of a sudden a commercial business.
And that, that to me applies more for smaller lots than it does for the larger.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Regardless, just a little experience we had in the Ogden Valley, they allowed in their AP three zones, they allowed convention centers, reception halls, all kinds of stuff. But most of the people moving up there, moving up there into either primary or secondary residential homes on these lots. Not realizing that the lots could be used for a whole myriad of other things in the A zones. And so all of a sudden, we get these convention centers being planned in the A zones right next door to these large lot residential, and really caused some strife for those guys. They're feeling like, you know, parking, lighting, noise, all kinds of stuff comes in a way.
Can we at least put them in as conditional, just why not not permitted?
Yeah.
So then it's looked at for those reasons, yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, conditional, it can be all those, and but, they definitely would have to have a certain, probably acreage to even consider it.
Okay, what's that acreage? Twenty?
Uh, no.
Yeah, it depends on the size of it.
I mean, how many yards can you put on an acre?
Yeah. Yeah.
How many parking spots did you put in an acre?
Always.
pasture and that's where they're gonna park cars.
Yeah.
As part of their venue, you can put a lot of cars on it, so.
I I don't disagree with that, but um how much space do you need to dampen the sound of a party or a large gathering? Uh between what you're doing and what you're. That's where I'm.
Right, that's why it needs to be a conditional use.
Most of theirs are like, I think you have to be going and out of their bike tent.
They're, they they pretty much are.
Right.
They really are, yeah.
And the ones that stayed away past nine. Clean up's on you, let's go home.
On a very big lot, but I think he only says, hey, we can only go. This long, and I think I think everybody's enjoying that. Gives like high school kids somewhere else to have things and people to have. Have Thanksgiving and people rent over all kinds of.
The only time that that one's even sort of a pain is when we're hauling A. With bell wagons and they're coming from the north and the south, that's not necessarily the venue's fault.
Right.
That's because the roads do now.
Yeah.
That's getting wider, it's because you're home. I know what.
Get that wheel a little bit further under the shoulder, that'd be much wider.
The L L R is the happy.
But it needs to be in the greens on rural residential and the state lot.
Yeah.
Would be the only two areas.
The the L L R is probably not feasible.
No, because, I mean, that's still L L R's third acre, right?
Uh we'll talk about that in just a second, right now it's listed as happening.
Okay, well, still half acre's not enough to do something like that, but a rural.
But if you get in those residential. And they have like a dance business in their basement. And they have several coming during the day.
Mm-hmm.
And they have no parking lot. They're parked along the street on both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, sorry, I was just going through the other proportions to see if we had anything else that would capture this use, but, okay, indoor gathering facilities, so here we are in the rural. Any state and. Okay.
Definitely not in the open space. How big was Kim Wheatley's lot?
Three. Actually, it might have been five acres.
So think about that, so why not? Somebody wanted to put a business on an open space.
Because then it's a commercial lot, not a.
So just to be clear, um the open space listing in Form Base does allow. Buildings to be in those open spaces.
Yeah, that's that's.
But you can have a double blocks with. Two point five percent.
You can have a pavilion on the very large.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't do that, something like this probably on a two acre open space, but on a five acre or so. Because you have some user percentage, what what was the percentage?
Two point five percent. Point five percent.
You'd have to have a lot of, a lot of acres of open space in order to make it work.
Oh, is that uh, that's two point five percent?
So you'd have.
You had a hundred acres.
Really big building.
You'd have two and a half acres.
That's true.
On a hundred acres, do we have, but we don't have an open space.
Oh, sorry. The building cannot cover more than two point five percent of the lot, and so you would, yeah, you would have a two point five acre building.
Oh. I don't see the. To me. That open space should be used for something because it'll keep it up.
That's true.
That's, I think it'll lock it in as well.
Hey. See in an open space.
It has a reason, a purpose to be open space. Then it should have somebody, we don't need to go down that road, let's, let's keep going.
True, you end up with. Yeah. Or or just, or just not making it all.
Yeah.
That means we all are. We're, hey, we can't.
That would be.
Okay. Before we scroll down a little bit more, I went to the Ogden Valley, I asked them if they would be willing to change large lot residential from twenty thousand down to fifteen thousand, I actually think it's in their best interest. They don't want to do anything just for the sake of um satisfying anybody else, so. I, so I didn't know a better way to say that. Those western weebies.
Can you get control of that up there?
Okay.
Wait, did you say western weebies?
Yeah, I made that mistake in our last meeting, I was like, no, it's stick, I'm gonna make sure that stays, that's coming back every meeting, the weebies out west. Okay, uh so what I've done. Yeah. Um is I've added a new street type between um medium lot residential and large lot residential, just calling it medium large. Lot residential, being super technical with this. And I, and I created a twelve thousand five hundred square foot lot requirement for that. Um and I would think out west, that would be kind of our fifteen thousand square foot deal, it's just.
Oh thirteen by.
I said twelve, but we could do thirteen by.
I would do the third acre and stick to it.
Third acre is fifteen thousand.
Is it thirteen?
It's fourteen.
Fourteen, 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 five twenty.
So what do you want to stick to?
So why don't we just leave it at fifteen thousand where it's at?
I I just wanna wanna go on and get away from that third acre, because that was the one the community looked like.
So talking about that a little bit more.
Uh let's, yeah, that's gonna affect us further down the road here, um and that's why I don't have a problem with it being either or.
Verbal road. Um. So these yellow lines would be that, and I would think. If I were going to develop in this community and I knew that we had our R one fifteen zone that we're working on doing with lot flexibility allowances. Um versus uh street regulated plan that says all lots have to be fifty thousand or twelve thousand, whatever it is, I'm probably gonna go with a flexible one. I'm just gonna go with the path of least resistance and, and so I don't anticipate, since we're making that path of least resistance, anything that is this yellow color. Either be becoming part of the form base zone. Now, it doesn't mean that, it can't be, but.
It's not like.
I just don't see it happening, and nor do I see a ton of benefit, because everything that we're. Putting in the form base, street connections, pathway connection, all that, we're also putting into our residential, our R one fifteen, uh R twelve nine ten. And so here, I think it's gonna be a little easier just to cut it off. At the um kind of gold or that gold color, which is small lot residential, uh three thousand square foot, oh, sorry, cut it, no. Eight thousand, we've got one that's eight thousand.
There is a three thousand.
There is a three thousand square foot.
But that's. That's the.
The. No, three thousand square foot, you can have up to four residential lots on it, it's small lot residential. Um you can have up to, finally you can have a.
Four homes on three thousand square.
Four ones. Basically, yeah.
Well, it's thirty by a hundred. Or, I don't know how you. I think one.
You go thirty feet deep by a hundred wide, then.
Yeah, that's the lot.
Have to build right almost to the edge of it.
Yeah, no, so, well, I think there are some setbacks, but I think they're, I think it might be.
That was less.
But the lot is thirty by. They draw this out.
Roughly, okay. Or maybe it's uh seventy-five by forty or whatever the difference is.
Well, it's obvious, you gotta have a place, I think. This room is probably thirty feet right here, what you're saying, yeah, here.
Maybe twenty-five.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven.
I would guess twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so if I could bring them that, it'd be by a hundred. We're almost sitting on this four foot.
Yeah, that sounds.
But that's a lot size. Not the four foot size.
And they go up.
So we're talking about sm- smaller townhomes, definitely, if you're gonna do four. Double or triple, yeah, so you might have a garage at the bottom, then you might have your main uh living area and then you're.
Because you have. You have a garage facing the back, so it'd be weird loaded.
Mm-hmm, they have to be reloaded in that case.
This is only in form base, right?
This is, this is only in form base, great.
Okay.
Make the layer.
But.
That makes me feel a lot better.
But the, the, the question is still about the true third versus fifteen thousand square feet or a acre. I think we ought to be consistent all the way through everything.
Yeah.
Not just here and there, and and to me, it is here and there, because I think that that applies differently. Depending on, depending on the situation.
You mean the R one fifteen?
The, the, yeah, the fourteen five.
Four point five twenty.
Or the, or the fifteen thousand, then call it R one four five twenty.
Yeah.
Or it's fifteen thousand, yeah, when I hear R one fifteen, it's fifteen thousand, I hear R one twelve, it's twelve.
Well, do we want to do R one fifteen special?
Yeah.
R one fifteen asterix?
No. Fifteen thousand, it's an easy number. They can average it.
Okay, that's, I'm confused about what you said just before, when you hear R one fifteen, that's fifteen thousand square foot, no one lot sizes.
Yes.
Yeah, but what we're talking about. Okay, as, okay, as long as we're clear that we're talking about.
Total density, okay, right? Yeah, but I think it applies both ways. I think if you have a situation comes up, that that if it, if it works in the developments for the area better to be at the fourteen five twenty, it should be.
Then zone it to a one, to a twelve thousand square foot lot and have them bigger, just like what Pat did there.
We should do that.
He didn't want for a fifteen, but he was like, well.
The problem with doing that is, and and that's a perfectly logical way of doing it, problem is when people hear R twelve, they hear just what you hear when you hear R fifteen. That's where the problem comes in.
And then that probably go to a twelve thousand square foot lot, if it fits better for the area.
Out there, Pat's not gonna have any problems if nobody's out there. As soon as you get closer.
As soon as it builds in.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yep.
I have a question for the ninety guy. What's the difference between our regular code and form base? What's like? Like what are we talking about? Form base you're dealing more with performance on architecture and building design?
It's not naive, that's a really good question. The typical zoning, um there's a lot of history behind that, and one of the reasons why you had, you hire planners, because we have to learn this from the garbage. But the, the term, I said this, I think in Ogden Valley, people, wow, he knows words. Uh the term is equidient zoning, it's called equidient zoning because of a a court case that happened in nineteen twenty years. Um basically. At the time, we're just saying. Those uses go over there, those uses go over there, and those other uses go over there, none of the twang remains, right? Um because they don't go well together, and this is industrial revolution fallout, right? People not wanting houses to be next to factories and brick manufacturing companies. So that was kind of implemented through uh a a national model zoning ordinance that was then kind of pedaled to the communities. Um the state of Utah uh adopted its Land Use Development Management Act, I think it was. Obviously, it was early forties and then Weeder County didn't actually get a port of any of that, about the fifties. So you kind of see there was like big gaps of of uh evolution that happened here, but ultimately what was adopted for most of these areas is. Isn't the residential zone is, where the commercial zone is, don't want to talk to each other. Um what we've learned since then, as as uh community planners, citizen planners and urban planners, is that that just creates traffic and pollution. And it doesn't create a good, great community, in all cases, it creates suburbs. Where people have to actually leave their neighborhoods to enjoy the rest of their communities.
And drive in a car to get anywhere, right?
And so the idea behind form base is to abandon. A lot of the concept of of keeping everything separate and start allowing some of these uses to be married in the same area. Um as long as they're not, as long as they look good, they speak to the community intent, the community character, um and you know, it enhances uh lifestyle, I guess.
Like Christians. Their. Saturday. That Jesus. Yeah. That that. Plan development. Yeah, a little bit of.
So Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, the idea from. The form base is so that if someone's coming in and wants to develop an area, it's not as vague as our general plan, they can look at it. Look at the color coding of the streets and get an idea of what the community is looking for in that area in particular. Say, oh, they're expecting this kind of an S B, now they still have to follow the general code that we have. And they're still going to have to pay for, it's, it's, it's not a given, they have to go through the rezone, but it's, it's a fine American. Um definition.
So um something that is, I think has been a little bit more challenging for the Ogden Valley to wrap their head around. This zone is supposed to be specific enough that once you are rezoned to it, you don't go, you don't have to go back in planning commission for any other approvals. Now, maybe for subdivision, if that stays in the planning commission's hands, the state code did get passed on. Um consolidating administrative approvals, I still think planning commission is in there, but it it does remove some of the um county commission. Responsibilities or obligations, anyway. Rick talked to you guys about that in one of the recent director reports. That being said, if we have a county code that doesn't require a developer to go through the planning commission or county commission for subdivision. They come in, they get their rezone and everything else is without for them.
But they do have to get the rezone.
They have to get the reason. Yeah.
And the intent is that they do not need a development agreement with this rezone, because we have all those specifications spelled out.
So no development agreement, no concept plan, everything is already provided.
Well, really, to that point, though, the form base could be used in a broader scope, not just, not just for high density. It could really be used for our, our fifteen. It could be used pretty much anywhere, if we, if we define it right.
Yeah, well, that's why I drew boundaries even further beyond, because I think. In the long run, the whole community would benefit if everything was just form based. Now, one of the things that is kind of sixes when it comes to what we're working on on the R one fifteen versus what we're looking at here in in the form base. Is how much better is form base gonna be in those single family residential areas? Because form base is not going to dictate uh design, at least our form base does not dictate design of those buildings. We don't require it to be a specific theme or, you know, architectural styling, um we're doing the exact same thing as we otherwise do, we're saying no closer than the street than this much, no closer to your neighbors than this much. And so it's almost the same thing, it's just following the same pattern and 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 layout.
Flexibility.
Yeah. Yeah, so it it, because it's following the same pattern and layout, we could later on get in there. And say, alright, along these types of streets, we now want to kind of open up these new opportunities, and we've already got the framework.
And I think that's a key. Later on, we look at that, I think right now for the community, just to swallow this portion of it, I think is a lot.
Yeah.
And if we started applying it everywhere. I don't know if now's the time for that. But if you guys feel differently, I'm totally open.
I think it's a better neighborhood.
Yeah.
I really do.
It does.
So everybody will walk their work. You have some commercial out front, your kids can go to work out there and not have to drive.
Yeah.
At home.
Yeah.
This is, I think it's designed to take, uh, what was that one with all our open space deals?
Uh cluster.
Clusters, designed to kick cluster out and this in as well.
Yeah, I I think that's a good way to look at it. Does that make sense? On the concept behind it all?
Sometimes you have to hurt the ones you love. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just like this general plan, you can talk to the Ogden Valley. Look at this fire of all. You look where it started and. It was, it was tired. Two on this, two on this for a while, you know, and a lot of people were not happy with it, but at the end of the day, it's done. And and we didn't have. We didn't have a lot of friction over it, you know, and I don't know if it's just because people were worn out. Or unwilling to participate.
Or they're not showing up in these rezone meetings.
Yeah, so unless you guys are hearing something, because I'm not hearing it as a, as a planning commissioner. Unless you guys are hearing to the staff, because you know, you're on the other end of that telephone all the time. Or or people walking in, unless you guys are hearing it, I'm not hearing it. I think some of the commissioners. Okay, fair enough. That's where I'm getting the information, because I'm not hearing. Yeah, I, I know, but. Um Krishna Brok is expressing a lot of that concern. Well, he's kind of in the cross.
Yeah, it's a word with the.
Yeah, where, where he's, yeah, but even, um for instance.
I didn't say that last.
Have to.
About how he handle black crime, just because he's getting a lot of comments from the public on that. So I know that he's expressed. He gave a lot of comments from some people, he don't come. And then there was what, half a dozen weights, you know. And and there was what, half a dozen weights, you know, I mean.
And I, it it's not, definitely not an injury.
Right. Yes, it's just, it's just a.
I thought that was all public flatter. Not on legislative items, it's not public.
Isn't that?
Yeah, when you're dealing with administrative, then you, you know, that does become public. But on legislative items, when working in code and things like that, we want to listen to the public, that's why we have public hearings. So we definitely want to get as much input as possible.
So are we having in the area where we're going to keep a guy who wants to get out of the dairy business because he's going broke, to keep going broke?
I sure hope not.
Good time, timely placement.
We're in the wrong business.
Yeah.
Because of the kind of issues, you know? Stuff like that, I'm just gonna say. How I really don't feel, because if I did, I could give some stronger language, but you know what? You get a half a dozen people over here. Talking about what we heard in that meeting. Okay, and I get the fact that we listen to them, but the bigger picture is, is Weber County needs that out there, it needs jobs. Could it be in a better place? Maybe.
You know, that river was the perfect buffer.
Yeah, I I agree with you. It's a perfect spot for that, and then in the future, you got that legacy just down the street for half a line. I mean, it's the perfect spot.
Well, and that's what I mean about you gotta hurt. But sometimes you gotta lead them to it, i- i- and it's not an easy thing to do, but you gotta lead them to it. I I know, I know. Well. Blessings are.
Yeah.
When he's here and stuff like that.
Law, is that what? It's like that is the minimum.
And that was all created, that was all crafted by us, uh, as the minimum, it doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that we have to stick. We could say that's the average, we could write that right in here, that that's the average.
Well, for the smaller ones, we can't do that.
Right.
But where it's for all, that that's.
And and that's kind of why I think that when you look at those yellow areas, we're probably not going to see form base there. I think we're gonna go R.
So, right, back to the this exact. And that. Ropelatos has the same color on it as what Waze did. Ropelatos is not going in with what that color says. As much as I was against it, so what's the difference in the two areas?
So Ropelatos ended up with a rezone with a development agreement where Black Pines is going to end up with what we want, the M and T zone. So we'll actually have that.
So that's almost better, because we're not doing it with a development.
Exactly.
Right.
But we still will have it.
Uh, and I'm rightly so.
But at the same time, Black Pine is doing it the right way. And actually, that the M and T zone is going to be going before the commission. Two weeks.
Two, three months.
Yeah, so that's.
Manufacturing tech, right?
Yeah, it's really like that's one, they're just trying to work.
I thought Fower was against it because there's not enough. Or tech in Black Pine.
No, he he's not against the M and T zone, he's wanting to work a few things out in the development agreement with Black Pine. So, so those are some things that he's trying to work out.
So you're right at the same place. Look, if it's done right, and it's done for development, but development, which I firmly believe in, I think that's really the best way for these developments to go in. Residential, commercial, investor.
Oh, I agree.
Every order which I think that is, because then you can, you can really define what you want that to be.
Yep.
And and that's why.
Charlie, plug your ear, because I know you don't like them.
It's a, it's it's regulated, you're creating special zones for all these areas, and so you're gonna need to hire a bunch of new planners to know.
When they all develop, the way they incorporate, you're gonna need.
I just don't want me to mad that I can't get a thing done fast.
But I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm not.
I I guess it's one of these things that, to me, it's sort of like the little. Guy with the. Buckets on, and you get some water in this bucket and water in this bucket, but in the end, if you do it right, all the water gets to where it needs to be. And that's why we we have these things, because I think a development agreement makes a good definition. But if we were really good at what we did, it would already be there.
Being a kind of.
But you gotta hold their feet to the fire like Jack on the States, like a halcyon, you know?
Yeah.
Well, if it's one of the developing, we'd have trees.
Well, the thing of it is, is we, i- in my mind, this is what I see is, is we don't hold their feet to the fire because nobody goes and looks.
So I I.
But to me, that oversight, they need to have people that go out and visit seed sites to make sure it's working. I know it takes time, but if there's no oversight to it. Once it's built, you're not gonna tell them, they're not gonna hang a red tag on it.
Yeah, that's right, well, in Halcyon, just to be clear, they had trees in the development agreement, they chose not to install them because the cost to actually buy them and install them was higher than the amount of money that the county sold.
Why, how do we hold their feet to the fire?
Oh, they're doing phase two.
They're gonna try and do.
That's right.
That's why we're holding.
So we're we're uh gonna work with them to make sure they get those trees in there, you know, they got a.
I told him how many times in the meeting?
Yeah.
I was against the trees. He got left in there.
Hey, the good news is, good news is, is that now they can go plant those trees, because there's probably some good irrigation settings out for all of them, they won't die.
Let's take a five minute break.
Thought we were.
Well, let me see, right, we probably were. Or we can call it a night.
I'd rather get through this if we can. Uh, hopefully, there's a ton more in there that we have to go through.
That way there, we won't have to scar over.
That's right, every time we don't get through it, let's start doing that, we have to start from the beginning.
We've we've kind of been doing that. All good.
Hi.
Should I want you guys to meet?
Well. Yeah. It's all good.
So.
Kind of see what goes on in the sentence.
I didn't make it out of you.
Charlie.
Yeah, he didn't visit the dogs in the front. Yeah, well, he's he, I don't know about frontier, because he had more of the dog more from the camp. And then he wanted waivers. Which he. Read about going into these guys, whether you're talking here. Yeah, I'm good.
I was wondering.
If he's. We don't have to, you're not the subject. Yes. Because it's not mine. Yeah.
Sure. Do you want to know their candy?
Um, yes. Uh. You're looking at. Randy and Randy get together. No. Oh. Is this the one that, when he was in the rookie?
I think he did tell me. I didn't see it. Picture of.
One other, Wednesday, fifty.
I hope he's seen. Was it? He informed, I wanted to, then he called, we're last, as we kind of gave up, like a lot of times, I don't know, it was going to be useful. Get the water going, and you have all the water. You also said. Pretty sure they know the. Yeah. I'll stay on top of it. I'll go find it, right? Make sure and bring it back. We can start.
And they say sales.
Right. Yeah, it's not bad, it's not.
No, not too much.
No, not too much, no. It's not like, it's not my, that's not my favorite.
Yeah, it's mostly the smell, the flavor is really good.
Yeah, alder must not pull.
Smell of what? Smell of what?
I don't enjoy sourdough bread usually.
Oh.
This one's not bad.
Yeah, I agree, if not, it's strong, I think. The, because I'm with you, I've had some that it's like, oh. But my daughter makes sourdough waffles that are delicious, but they're not real strong, I mean, I don't taste sourdough, I just taste like fluffy. Don't have Utah, so it's been really. He actually left the Y because he got a better scholarship than him.
Why not in out of strength? So if you want to get a perpetuation, you know, like. No, I mean, like, how how long it can be a part of the thing?
Oh, no, I. No idea.
I mean, it's like, uh, you can't get married for temple, right, unless you, uh.
Oh, like they get, they got.
The whole one year, really. Well, I guess a local name in most other countries would be, it's just.
Well, because some people. Mostly people who aren't members don't want to be one of you.
Yeah. That's what I expect.
Hundred coat.
Yeah.
Go to bed ten.
Is that hardly honest?
No.
Go to bed by ten?
No, you just have to have like, you do have to have guys out of your apartment by like eleven, there's a rule about that. It's eleven midnight.
Probably eleven thirty, because you know, Jesus goes to bed at about nine. So you don't want to turn.
Man needs to be in my bathroom, I love bathrooms, I may be going alone. And you know, my 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 daughter lived in BYU housing with four other girls, they were all in their mid to late twenties, all of them college graduates. A few of them, two of them were the cabinet choir, and they were just working and going to school, they had housing and shared the apartment together and. But my daughter met her husband there and got married.
She got her MRS degree?
She did.
Y'all ready? Charlie's got, we'll give you one hour, we'll kill in an hour.
Yeah.
Yep, let's do it. Let's kill it. All right. Eight o'clock, we'll even see when you get out of here. Fifty three minutes, well, it's going down. All right, good, well, let's just scroll through then.
Well. Question, I think I've got an issue.
Twenty two, three, one twenty, George?
So we're at. So here's my concern, and we're seeing more and more of this, it's closely related to like outdoor storage and stuff like that. We're starting to put. Four homes on three thousand square feet, people have boat, people have trailers, people have. But we're excluding.
Not those people.
Well, it doesn't matter, even with the ten thousand square foot lot, you're, we're making it to where there's not room for this, so what do these people have to do? You gotta go storage somewhere, and but we have nowhere in the county besides the manufacturing zone that you can have outdoor storage, or even covered RV storage. So indoor stores, right? Covered RV is still outdoor because it's not completely enclosed.
Yeah.
But even, I mean, some people don't want to pay to put it under, they want to pay to put it in a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and we have that nowhere in this town.
Yeah, and and that's a problem, because you know, I've always felt, especially some of these bigger developments. You know, quite a bit of, uh. One or one will say a bunch of houses. It, to me, it only makes sense to have a place to put this stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, by the time you get your truck out, drive twenty miles to the condo, the boat.
Yeah.
Fix two flat tires, you don't go anywhere.
Yeah, and that's only often to have that, because your option is out west.
That's exactly right.
We really need to put that in other places.
Do you want to put it in your form base area? This with the storage units is there, well, storage, issue with outdoor storage and storage units is that ugly. And there's very little financial motivation, even though they're cash cows, very little financial motivation to make them attractive. And we have worked in the Agua Valley with folks who uh are doing storage units, and um maybe what we do is we say, all right, your storage units can be. Facing the other direction behind street oriented residential, and maybe uh, or sorry, street oriented commercial with residential above, and the bottom level is your storage house, that is.
I I don't, I I'm I'm really not going any. With like self storage, I'm just. It's outdoor, outdoor, that that's where the issue is.
Outdoor storage is the extreme. I think if you can afford a big fancy whatnot, I think you should be able to afford indoor storage so that you're not burdening the the rest of the world with. The scene, the outdoor storage.
Yeah, but but did you, did, were you here when we did the the Weaver industrial park storage?
You can screen it, and you, I guess.
Have you seen it?
No.
It looks nice, and they keep it very nice.
So maybe outdoor storage, but it has to be totally screened, because a chain link block of broken down boats is not what anyone wants next to that house.
And and uh, I like a commercial lot owner that doesn't want that in there either, because what it looks like and what it draws in.
Yeah, and they are, they can be um dangerous, because they're, it's it's a large area that it. It's monitored with people.
A year back, you go up on Adams and Washington. That one sat there forever, and I don't think it ever looked like that, in my opinion.
Which one?
Where they're building the new Golden West offices up by the hospital.
Oh.
I mean, that that storage there, I mean, and they get it for that reason. Small lots in the terrace, people have.
That's not the prettiest looking.
I just thought it was bad.
Thank you.
Well, the the thing is.
I can be a better screen.
The thing that's good about that one though is its location. Central, it's easy to get in and out of, and you can get big stuff in and out of there because you've got pretty good sized roads around it to get on. So let's let's leave the aesthetics aside for a minute, yes, I agree, they they need to look better, but the concept of having it is what's important.
Yeah.
And and the other stuff we can, we can use, we can bring along with it. But I think it's, I think it's important, I I remember when we were talking in the general plan, you brought that up many times.
Yeah.
I think a place, now, we'll go back to Ropelatos. I think that'd be a great place.
Exactly.
That'd be, that'd be a a good use for that, and especially when fifty one hundred comes all the way through that block. So anyway, I think we do need to have something like that.
But to Charlie's point, is this something we put in the form base code specifically?
I think so, because that's going to be your highest dense area.
But I think the highest density, we need. But I think the highest density we need to reserve for housing and maybe just outside of that density. So don't, not way out, but we're putting a lot of money into roads, do we really wanna put a lot of money into the infrastructure to build houses and then take huge blocks?
Put nothing into it, they're just talking about having. Access, six, um, access to the things that you do, if you're having high density housing, those are the people that are needing storage, why don't they want that closer than instead of going clear down somewhere else?
Exactly, not true that, but we're talking three miles away instead of two blocks away.
Two blocks. If I have an apartment, I have a bunch of shit, my canoe or whatever, I wanna be able to get to, I wanna be able to. Get it next door and done.
So I think it would be miles.
I think it has done.
What about, oh, we got a great railroad out there. What about a linear, uh, uh, an allowance for something linear that is facing the railroad, so you've got essentially an access way that runs right along the railroad, uh, border? And then just off to the, uh, north of that, you've got your doors or your, for your storage units or your, uh, outdoor storage or whatever. And then in front of that, between that and nine hundred or whatever the, yeah, nine hundred at that point, um, you've got commercial or multifamily.
That works, that still takes it just in one area on twelve.
Yeah.
It's not close enough, and I think. I don't think it hurts anything with this stuff, right? Well, there, there's a sign right across from the country corner. Commercial property, twenty-two acres.
Be a great place for one, you just couldn't make a pencil on that.
It's a legislative decision, so no conflicts of interest in very dogged.
I think it's important to, to look at that, I have, I think there's great value, it's added value, I think, I think there needs to be. Just in general, even in or out of the form base, but if we're gonna drive this form base to kind of be the overall guiding. Code, so to speak, even, even on the larger lots. I, I think it's a good, good a time and good a place to put it in as, as any, I don't think I have a problem with it being in the form base.
What would be the vehicle to do that though? I mean, you're, you're talking about giving up, uh, property to where you could have. Another twenty homes.
Yeah, so you'd have, you'd have to be able to see some economic benefit out of storing something outside.
Somebody's gonna want to see that. Well, cause here's your benefit, because it's long-term money.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're buying the property and you're getting, uh, fifty dollars a trailer, you put two hundred trailers in there every month, that's your, that's your retirement.
You can drive by that car wash across from Minima, or the storage units, but I can't remember what they were advertising now, fourteen by, it's expensive, it's two hundred seventy-five dollars a month.
Yeah. I mean, there's a, there's a reason why there was the big storage shed built there for a while, because that was everybody's retirement. Built storage sheds and that was the retirement.
You showed me one that they built. We need to have storage sheds, they're just in centimeters.
Didn't really want that anyway. What brings in the most money? No, I, and that's where I think these. These, you know, outdoor storage and RV storage lots and that, that's, it's the same. Well, if somebody wants to put an indoor, look at what they did there in Sunset, just off of nineteen hundred, on the west side of Sunset, that's high level, indoor storage.
So these zones do allow indoor storage.
Right.
It's the outdoor storage that's, um.
And we just, just so you guys know politically, we just changed the ordinances like it, what, two, a year and a half ago? To eliminate outdoor storage from the only M, M three and M two zone, I think. So let's talk about doing it, but, um, well, first off, let's, maybe we can parse this out to the ways. Is this something we could look at maybe over the next year or so?
No.
And discuss, or is it something we wanna address?
I think if we're gonna do this code, let's address it with the code.
Okay.
And you actually take longer. To do, but let's do it right. Tell him exactly why.
Okay.
And I will.
A, a lot of these communities are going to be for people that barely afford their homes. Um, so this is the higher density areas are gonna be that way, not all of them, some people are just gonna want a smaller place to live. But. Well, no, they're pointing people, they're really, we're building stuff, small as we can get it so that people can actually get into a house, they just got married, they're not, they're not able to afford all these fancy toys, you know? But, and then there's gonna be people that wanna downsize, but then wanna place to put their things, um, but. Well, it, it would be nice to have smaller storage areas. Throughout, but they need to be small, so when, maybe we look, if someone comes in with, uh. A plan, you, a, a, a planned development of some sort, and they want some sort of nice, you know, a small facility that's for the people in the community, you know, for that area.
Yeah.
And I think we saw something like that for those townhomes that were kind of by Midland Drive, well, that's that, no, it was somewhere else.
Val, they're over there on Val Sanders has got those storage units right next to those townhomes.
And I thought that's, that's a good idea because.
But I, but I, no, we're talking about stores.
For the townhomes to have the option to rent.
I do believe that's what Mel said.
There's an HOA, um, by the Hognin Athletic Club that actually has a facility in their, um. In their HOA and it's more of a retirement community, um, and, but it's shielded by their community. And I'm trying to think how they block it off, cause I didn't know until I went through their community, they actually had an RV lot in their HOA. Like they, we pay for the RV.
Well, I think that's fine, except for that holds somebody that actually wants to make a living out of being able to turn their property into something that they can make money from. And, and.
An HOA, so it was like, okay, we have a car, does she have, you know?
And that's, that's fine for that community, but I think in general terms, if you have an area that has. I've got five acres. Form base zone, and I wanna do that as my commercial business, or taking that away.
It, it's a cash cow because it's a small bill and people pay those.
Yeah, yeah, every month.
That bill pays down when they're empty, when they're.
Yes, we're talking somewhere the warehouse storage, I mean, the out, the outdoor storage is, is a little bit. I, I don't know, that one's tougher because depending on the topography, you know, you can have a wall to screen it, but then as soon as you go over the hill at a freeway, you're looking down on it.
You know what?
Indoor, people still want the indoor too.
Life is ugly, I mean. So I think it's what best suits the community and, and the needs of the community within a relatively short distance for them. That's what, that's the way I'm looking.
That may be better, the guy that's got the fifth well stored there might make his neighbors a block down the road a lot happier than having it right next to their house block and then.
Or they drag it in front, it's parked in the road.
Trying so hard to get this housing in. And.
That has to go with the house.
Yeah, I agree.
The people were.
People love.
I disagree one hundred percent.
I, I disagree, you just said it because they low income and that's what's going there.
Well, people that can't, are we going to build housing for people's toys, or are we gonna build housing for people who need houses? That's my. We need to build both, I'm saying maybe you drive two miles instead of two blocks, that, that's my contention, is it two miles or?
But now we're getting, but let's put a little. And, and you know what, that's not fair.
That's what we're doing, that is entire, that is our job.
No, it's not our job, that's not our job. I could not afford a home rewrite, it makes the LMI. But I have a trailer. And I like to use it. And guess what? I would, I couldn't afford to move into one of those homes, but guess what, I love my trailer and I'm gonna keep it. Because that's a hobby, it's the same thing with, we build these small lots out there, they're not just always gonna be home, they're gonna go places. We've gotta put the amenities with them. Yes.
So I'm just saying, let's not.
The only thing is, there'll be a place for that.
But.
People will pay an exorbitant amount to the community.
So can we, let's stratify this just a little bit, we've got indoor storage and we've got outdoor storage. Which one are we talking about, cause I. Just outdoor.
Yes.
I, I'm concerned with both two. Where, where we're having things dense and we want it to be pedestrian oriented, we put a big chunk of storage in the middle of that, I'm concerned. Um, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it, I think we need to have it, I don't think it needs to be ten miles away or twenty miles away, but I don't wanna prioritize it. Over the quality of our dense communities.
Yeah.
So that, that's what I'm trying to say, not know.
Took it over and allowed it in the vehicle oriented area. At least in this village, we're talking about.
Right, it's only vehicle oriented, but not in our.
But you can chuck a rock from the vehicle oriented over to the form base and, and break every window in every one of the buildings.
Better, and it's a big indoor storage facility like you saw is not gonna look any different than a big Walmart.
See, I disagree, I would rather see. The stores and all that type of stuff on our roads, our vehicle oriented, why it's there, not a storage facility. The storage facility is gonna go just fine up there in, whether it be the gold section or, or any of that, in my opinion. Okay, what better neighborhood could you want than a storage, uh, uh, uh? It's quiet. It's clean, as long as it's managed well and then they're only gonna stay in business.
We have some by, like in our community, it's people. In the morning and, yeah.
Let's, I wanna stratify this a little bit more, now that I know we're just talking about outdoor storage. What kind of outdoor storage, are we only talking about toys?
Out, RVs, yeah, anything conservative outside is gonna be pretty, usually is gonna be fair sized.
So one, one, one of the reasons why we list outdoor storage, uh, just as nebulous as it is, I mean, it, it includes contractor storage yards. It includes ware, warehousing items that you don't have to keep inside. And so if we're talking boats, RVs, vehicle storage, outdoor vehicle storage, that's a, maybe a little bit of a different ballgame than just outdoor storage. Right? Is there anything else to store outdoor? Other than boats and RVs and campers and.
Oh, a couple of.
Couple of broken down cars. Yeah. Okay, if we, uh, alright, so if we limited it to recreational vehicles and their true associated trailers, right? Are we okay with saying, yeah, that's good, they just all have to be registered? It's one of the things that we say when it comes to vehicles, like if you've got vehicles parked in view of the street. And I resaw that, uh, and they're not registered vehicles, they're inoperable junk vehicles is what our code defines those, so you'd get a, a nasty grant for. Register it, it's gonna be hard to wanna register it.
Right, yeah, and I'm storing it on private property, I'm paying, so I'd be pretty pissed off if it comes up.
Okay.
You're paying the storage just because it's, I mean, that's, it could be a brand new trailer and it's not registered, right?
Maybe you ought to do what Tennessee does in Mississippi. It's part of the yard.
As I say, not Tennessee, yeah, Mississippi. I, I just got done with that drive, uh, I drove all the way through Tennessee, down into Mississippi, down into Louisiana, uh, a few weeks ago. And I have to tell you, you leave Virginia and you enter Tennessee, there's a stark difference. I am surprised, but, but then when you leave Tennessee. When you leave Tennessee and enter Mississippi, it actually goes back to being somewhat nicer again. Uh, and I'm, it's the infrastructure, the infrastructure is falling apart left and right in Tennessee, I don't know what they're, what's going on there, but.
You know, I, I guess, and I asked Charlie how hog over gate was on this and. And Charlie shared that, you know, he doesn't like around the gateway to the community and I agree with that. Because to me, we don't wanna go buy a open storage place to get into the subdivision. So. I guess. To me, I like the idea because we're not gonna give our stuff up. Americans love stuff. And I've got stuff, but not a lot, but I have stuff and I'm gonna hang on to it. So how do we, on, on these small lots, the question is, is where would that go in a development? If we've got a development that's up here and they. It, but behind, I'll just pick a spot, well, the, the joining development that gets there in the future, that there should have been the first one. So that it's kind of in an area. But I guess, how do we? Do that, I mean, does somebody buy it and it's own so they could develop that? Or is it just part of the development some way?
Well, we could, we could say, uh, so, well. The form based zone doesn't apply to any of these properties until somebody rezones to the property, now the candidate could always tear the bandit off and say, alright, everybody who lives out here, this now applies to. But I just don't see the commissioners doing that, they have a hard time doing that. Right, and so I can see any one of these lots staying a different zone and the form base kind of developing around it. And so there's a possible way they can do it, or they can do a master plan community, uh. I don't know that there're gonna be a lot of people knocking down our do, doors, at least not for a while to do outdoor storage, just because I, I think the market is gonna drive housing.
I, I differ, I beg to differ.
You think?
There is nowhere around here where you can build it, none of the cities allow, West Haven, nowhere around here that has all this idea.
Allows for outdoors storage.
But I, I think that what.
Not even Perry.
But I think that people are looking for quick buck, right?
Well, maybe, maybe for a minute or two, they have trailers parked on it as they're working through the designs of the housing.
But as far as like having a lot of proposals come through wanting outdoor storage, I think we're. Cause it's not, I, I think if it was allowed, you'd see it.
Do you?
I, I, just because there's none out there. The rest of the reason why we went through this, why I bring it up, because I had someone reach out and say. It doesn't, it's not feasible to build it out west, well, three, there's no room in the industrial park to build it where it's zoned now. And nowhere else around allowing it.
Well, it turns out to be the same way, if we have a zone out in the M area. Still gotta get your car, go clear out there and get it. So to be.
And hope you didn't forget your hitch.
That's what I do. But the thing of it is, it needs to be close to where these developments are. I've always thought that, and I guess it's just. In, in my mind, it's making it work out so it doesn't look a trucey. But it's a benefit to have it close to your home.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I don't know, it's something, but.
If we limited to recreational vehicle storage and related trailers, I think that's a good step.
You can see it full of contractors and equipment, stuff like that.
What's that?
Contractors are starting to find places too, but.
I, I do remember that contractor.
Every meeting. Why can't it be indoor, I can see allowing indoor storage in these commercial zones, I don't understand why it has to be outdoor storage.
Get in and out of them, and you'll have a building that looks like a pile of junk after two or the first two or three people ran in a trailer or pickup into it, trying to get into it around it.
Yeah, look at the size of the, the trailers that are built now.
Drive past Sierra or.
They're ginormous. So it's gonna be.
Yeah, pretty costly.
Is our form base, how big does it likely have to be?
Um, for most of the non-single family residential, it doesn't matter. It's, yeah, as small as you want it to be, as big as you have it.
Unless, unless she has to be there this one or four hours a day, that takes little players in and out. Because if not, whoever runs out there.
Can we start with maybe allowing it, the, what if we took the block between eleven fifty and the railroad and said it can't be allowed in that area?
It shouldn't just be dictated at that point. I think that.
Well, it's. That would be an easy fix, so it's not really. It's not in your residential, if you put it on form base, you could figure out.
Hang on, I see, when you're talking about residential, you're not talking about form base residential alone, you're talking about R one fifteen and everywhere.
Everywhere, but especially more here because of how small our lots are.
Right.
It's needed more here than.
That's why I say right here along the road, it works, you're within a quarter mile of anybody.
But, so if I go back here, what about that spot where seven hundred's gonna turn? I mean, what's wrong with this?
I mean, what's wrong with this? You know, what's wrong with having it over here?
That's not just our problems.
You know, you're looking at your closer, I, I don't think we can dictate it to that point, or or limit it.
Alright, you guys, you guys set the tone, we'll talk to the commissioners about that. Um, so when it comes to writing this, that's, it's gonna be the next question, um.
We gotta go. Then we're standing in with the wind right now. But I think that it's, it's something that we're, I think it'd be sooner than later, because we need to address that.
I think it's something they'd be willing to consider, uh, if they don't apply the commission. Feel strongly about it, especially where the trouble spots have historically been in the Alcoa Valley. Um, okay, so let's, let's address the issues that come up with where these can be located, so, um, appearance, unsight- unsightliness, right? Um, so how how do we balance that out? So unsightliness, I was about it, um, what else?
I mean, they've gotta build it to meet the same standards that's in the zone. As far as architectural and all that.
This is outdoor, but I mean, as far, you're gonna have to have some sort of a.
Okay, yes, okay.
All that still gotta meet the requirements.
Setback from a street? Should it be setback a certain distance from a street so it's not as visible? Honestly, I think the only issue.
That's the case, but I'm starting to think now was, if you look at that thing, what does it look like? Is it chain link with flats or how high?
There you go.
What kind of fencing we need to, uh.
You do the nice concrete fans or something around it so that the aesthetics.
Or masonry, right? Actually, masonry would be nicer, but eight foot.
Well, you look at this part, so right down twenty five fifty and then did it on twenty five fifty when they widened it. They put that. You know, it is, it's just like the way they build the walls on the freeway, but in that form, there was.
Just because I didn't want to, Andrew was saying, you talk about these buildings getting damaged, so same thing with the wall, somebody backs their foot on the wall and it. Yeah, the chain links easily fix them.
These, if it's like the concrete slab walls, you pull it out and it's like when they hit a wall in the freeway. It's aesthetic more than security to me.
And and that's what I'm.
Yeah.
You okay with tinted tan? Just colored concrete?
With spotlight.
So should there be a setback from the street?
I mean, if rather, I'm sure there's, I mean, some sort of landscape, I mean. At least fifteen feet off, but then their entrance and their gate. Well, like in the form base, though, they can go right to the road, I don't think we want this right on the side. Well, we want some sort of landscaping before it gets there. But I think you're gonna have that to turn in too. Well, and that's the thing, you, where their entrance is, you know, they're gonna have. But they build their tent here, then their gate, they're gonna have. But I I agree, I don't wanna ride up on the sidewalk because it would allow it.
So you're saying that the screening would match the architecture.
And depending on what it is, it's just like we were talking about when Randy was trying, when Randy was trying to get his place. Like Wayne had been down with St. George or Ruski where you saw that cinder block construction. That had the nice, you know, ornamental gates on and all that stuff, yeah, if you make it fit in. I don't see a reason.
I think, you know, where we're doing this form based stuff, the the bigger thing in my mind, you got Taylor, Wes Weaver, Warren, Wes Warren. Each of those could be themed a little bit different to create community.
And the general plan says they should be themed based off of, yeah, their historic roots and.
Exactly.
Okay.
I think it fit if we could just figure out how to make it so it looks nice.
Okay, uh, eight foot masonry or stamped color concrete wall, is eight foot tall enough?
I need it to be ten, most of these trailers are what, fifteen feet tall?
They can't be taller than thirteen, they won't play around the most bridges, but. So let's.
Could you mitigate the the need of solely outdoor? If you require some of the just regular storage to have so many outdoor spots in there? Cause that's what, I grew up in Vegas, so all the jokes about Vegas. So, it seemed like that was normal there.
No, and I I I like that idea.
Perimeter and then the outdoors inside of the indoor.
Well, they would have like the front of the lot and a bunch of like the group, you know, you'd have your indoor and your garage shaped ones. And then in the back, they'd have a bunch of stalls, some of them would be covered and others wouldn't be. And, and that was part of the whole storage unit, and then retired couple living upstairs over the opposite.
Watch it, I mean, that makes sense, I think it's, and what kind of a community was that in though? What was it? Was it residential or what did you see that?
Uh, everywhere, so you'd see, uh, a subdivision right next to it and a grocery store on the other side of it. And apartments behind it and, you know.
So sort of, sort of form base, maybe a little larger scale form base than what we're kind of, or at least what I'm imagining.
But just a way to kind of mitigate how much whole outdoor storage unit. When it's integrated with the.
They have to be tall enough to cover what's inside.
No, well, back to his point, before we go back to the thing, I I agree. I think so many indoors should have so many outdoor, but my only concern is that we're getting into two different business markets there. I think the people that, you got your storage companies, the New Year's sheds and your, you know, and your outdoor storage. But they're, well, I guess, I don't know, because there's not a lot of outdoor storage out there, there's only the one.
Maybe because it's not been allowed.
That, exactly.
And and I never was at any one in Vegas, so everything was a bowl. You'd have one vacancy because someone just moved. You're scrambling to get it.
No, and that, I think there's a need for it, especially as we go smaller, higher density, smaller lot. Back to the fence. I I think ten foot's good, I, I don't know. They got basically a freeway wall that you're looking at as you're driving through.
Are those freeway walls, are they ten feet?
Oh, no, those.
Oh, you don't wanna see a freeway.
No, if you get, I don't care if I see the top of a trailer, I know what's over there, but it's aesthetically furthering because what's going up to it.
Yeah.
If you get higher than eight feet, you typically would require a wind load engineered kind of situation, so.
I think even eight feet requires, I didn't think over six requires engineering, doesn't it?
Between six and eight, depends on the jurisdiction.
That's true.
Over eight feet almost always requires a wind load. She doesn't wanna be able to see it from you in the Highlands.
Alright, uh, it is, alright, moving on, uh, utility uses, any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I think I have a question, when you talk about wastewater treatment. What, like, are you talking about like the drying beds and everything in the middle of your community?
So, right now, um, the state doesn't look highly on renewable systems.
Okay.
So, but yeah, your separator ponds and stuff like that, um, they they may be needed. Uh, the Wolf Creek, um, uh, sewer system, that's surrounded by homes, well, almost surrounded, almost. If they're doing it right, they shouldn't smell much at all.
Okay.
Um, it's the, it's the settling ponds that the state really wants to shy away from that start to get.
Oh, those are usually indoor, don't they use?
No, they're large scale, eight, multiple acres, but you're right, the states. You're not gonna see very many lagoon systems get permitted because the lagoon system can't take out the nitrogen and the phosphorus loading.
So we're not gonna have a lot of.
No, in fact, the lagoon systems that exist today, they're. I figure out that from money at the.
Or they felt it when the wind blowing the right way down.
I've never seen that that burner lit before, the other night we drove down past there and that burner was, that burner was lit. And it looked like the refineries down in, down in Moore Salt Lake.
I'm not kidding.
So, Salt Lake County, they've got big methane tents that are over their separator containers that capture as much of that methane. And then cycle it into generators that that actually, uh, not just supply the energy to the complex that it's in. There also powers, uh, sends power back to the grid.
Sort of central Weaver, but when it gets too much and their generator can't, they don't send it back. That's why they, that's why it doesn't burn all the time, but it's in, that's in that.
I I've never seen it burn before.
So you could have that smelly burning happening?
It it smells, it was like when you drive.
Do we wanna look at where it's allowed and?
I I don't know, I guess.
Well, I know that they're building houses, just. Central Weaver, right there, and people are buying them.
I don't know, you you might live over there, you decide if you like.
Back and forth on all this stuff. We've permitted all the way across in a water treatment or storage facility, you know what it looks like? Have you driven by Weber Basin lately, up on one ninety three and I, or eighty nine? That's exactly what that's allowing in there, and we beat to death outdoor storage, so. Putting it in perspective.
Okay.
I I would question it too, just to make my.
It's gotta be there. You're gonna, we're gonna build house.
Um, so he is getting most of his property annexed into Little Mountain, um, sewer. Now, the county. What's that? They are.
They're open.
They're open lagoons, yep, now the. Mm-hmm, we're throwing some money at going.
Tune the wood they get told between the SRF fund for more quality.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Did they get the legislative appropriation too?
Um, they they got five, I believe, but I don't think it's going to that project, I think it's going somewhere else. So we'll see what that, oh, uh, a new amount, um, no.
They went in front of legislature for an appropriation for that.
Yeah, they asked for twenty million or something, but they didn't accept it. We'll see, what actually comes out of it, yeah, I mean, the long term sewer master plan west of the, uh, river. Is basically, it's about eighty five to ninety million dollars. Uh, so someone's gonna have to come in at some point.
Change.
Yeah.
Some change, exactly.
But Black Pine's gonna take care of a portion of that.
You didn't go another way.
Oh, they're going east, you're talking about going west.
Well, isn't it eventually gonna all come back to Central Weaver?
Ideally, everything will be interchangeable, um, it's interconnected, so. The idea would be that, uh, Black Pine's pump station deep enough that, um, things flow down to that. But that only gets you over to probably halfway over.
Which one?
So Black Pines, if you're gravity flowing, I think that takes you out to like seventy one hundred, um, west max. So then you have to have another station there that goes further. And basically, what the master plan is, is let's have gravity line going either direction, so we capitalize on having systems in both directions, but. That's long term.
The long term, the central Weaver's gonna take Little Mountain over and that's gonna be planted too. So it's all gonna be the same system and ideally.
Ideally, crossing our fingers.
And there are ways to kind of step in the renovation of lagoons to up in Morton, they put in headworks, for example. To help separate out some of the solids and and other ways before it gets out into the the lagoons. And, um, as part of the headworks, you can, uh, introduce different kinds of elements like aeration and and early chemical treatment of the thing. So that when it gets out to the lagoon, it's already kind of pre-treated. And then the lagoons do their thing and then it's a lot cleaner out there. It still does and it's, and it smells bad, but.
No, I I I mean, they've gotta be there. I think the likelihood we're gonna see them in a form based zone is very small, but.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think, I think you're right.
Okay, um, the idea behind making it a little more permissive for those is because they're government.
Exactly.
And government doesn't like to be hard on them, they like to be hard on the private market. Just, okay, vehicle oriented uses, any questions, comments, concerns?
Recomer car wash is conditionally used in a vehicle oriented commercial area.
Because a car wash, you can't tell how many stacking lanes are gonna be needed, the orientation of it, all that kind of stuff. Until you actually are looking at a specific site and its access from the street. So it tends to be a little bit more intense, um, just because, you know, when you, especially the laundry type car washes that are going in the. With the Quackets or. The Mr. Quacks. Say it again. Why is it conditional?
Why is it not in the, the other commercial, with the, the other commercials?
Cause it's very vehicle centric, and so the idea would be that this type of use go out where the vehicle oriented uses are. You wanna car, wash your car, you just drive two blocks down to where the car wash is, as opposed to. This would otherwise take a commercial street front, or you have to. Really design it, yeah. I mean, you could, you could over engineer it to the point that your car wash is behind all of your commercial street front, but, you know, then your car wash owner's gonna say, hey. I can't even get a sign back here.
Yeah, and then.
Yeah.
So, I.
Um, others?
Truck, gas or refueling station, I think should be allowed in. New core in it, because if you notice, we're going away from the big truck stops to. The map because they don't build them big enough, because now we got all these people that got their trailer stored here and they gotta go get gas before they head out of town. So look at Maverick on twenty seven hundred. But I I think it should be allowed in vehicle, or at least conditional hours in the area.
Terminal, okay, now we're out of the uses, well, now we're on special regulations for these uses. So everywhere we saw these uses, easy section, you see them under special regulations, C section one oh four twenty two dash four. That is your special regulations, and so everywhere you see this, there are additional restrictions that are assigned to these uses, okay? Uh, so hopefully, as you look through that, um, you see one oh four dash twenty two dash four point zero one zero. Which is special regulations generally, and I'm just gonna go through the header of each of these. So all uses generally shall, you know, not create an obnoxious amount of noise, dust, vibration, whatever that that affects your neighbor. Um, you drive through windows, there are specific regulations for those, intended to keep it rear loaded. So that your drive through windows aren't facing the street, so you're not getting a Riverdale Road situation where. Your cars are going around the buildings, then opposite direction to the vehicle in the right next to them, from the thing. Um, it's not, it's easier said than done, because now all of those businesses that have, because those businesses are facing the opposite direction of the street. Now that those driving with them are gonna be on that side. Um, so, but if we're saying face your building to the street, that'll make things a little bit easier, just not make business owners. Um, perpetual building maintenance, uh, agreement, so basically in most of these zones. And make sure this is only applicable. If you put a property line, okay, when a building is setback less than ten feet from a property line, so where it's allowed. Um, you have to have a perpetual maintenance agreement for that side, uh, basically from the neighbor's property. So if you were to come in and say, I wanna be zero setback from my property line, and you didn't have the agreement or consent of your neighbor to actually. Get access to that side of your building, we would say, no, you gotta be minimum ten feet so you can get actually in that. We would say, no, you gotta be minimum of ten feet, so you can get actually in that, that vehicle, uh, on that side to ma- maintain that side of the building. This is mostly applicable in commercial, but I could see maybe. Uh, let me just make it clear, we're not gonna require that for residential. Yeah, um, that way if you've got a five foot setback, you don't have to have a perpetual maintenance agreement with your neighbor. Um, I think this is more applicable for commercial and maybe multifamily residential, uh, than otherwise.
Okay, so if you've got a five foot side. Somebody needs back trouble. Be able to throw the scraps. Yes, so I guess that's just not gonna happen. That's what we're saying of residential types of.
Now, we did say in the R one fifteen zone that we'll work on is if you actually do get a reduction down to five. It's gotta be with railroad, so you can't do. So you can drive your truck to the front and then scrape everything, and then drive your truck to the back and scrape everything down, but. At the end of the day, someone's gonna build a deck or a gazebo or something. Be, I mean, my house is, I've got a ten foot driveway and then there's. Six feet between my driveway and the neighbor's house, and they just did, they're roofing, I just had shingles all over my trailer, which is hard for my. So they came over and apologized, but that was it. The owners came later and said, well, did we?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, I'm working up, we're special regulations for specific uses, so this is where the, uh, specificity comes in.
There's some, I, I couldn't follow, cause if you look at. B, so one two fifty-one, it says automobile repair of any kind, but then it says refer to paragraph B of this section.
Good call.
In B.
Yep.
I was lost, it's the same thing.
Good call, I think it's supposed to be A, thank you for catching that, you got it.
And it's repeated in B and D as well, but I don't know if they were referring to B or A or.
I guess if you refer the B and now that one says refer to A.
Name, name your own destiny. If you wanna see Johnny kiss Sally, turn to page fourteen. You wanna see Johnny jump Sally. Uh, I'll be right there, power shot. Okay, I'll see if there's anything else in there, I think that was it. Thank you for catching that, so automobile or other vehicle related uses, which they have to throw in here, maybe something a little bit more, um. For the storage as well, upper storage. Okay, automobile repair of any kind, automobile sales, rentals or service, uh, boat sales or service, campgrounds, picnic areas. Um, car washes.
Car washes are pretty spelled out, so why do we have a conditional?
We can change it.
Well, just, I mean, it's like.
Wow, I feel like you hate car washes.
Car washes are very, car, so in the land use world, car washes, um, storage units, what else we have in that list, build. Things that are really challenging to deal with, car washes smell really, it's those kinda.
Anything agricultural related. No, it's true.
There's just an exemption on everything.
Exactly.
It is, so, but I think it's a little easier, cause there's. There are specific types of uses, I can't think of any others than those schools, schools that are really hard to.
Schools just tell you. Here's, you inherit your horse, we'll build what we want, yeah, and we learn that.
Part of the issue when it comes to the commercial types of uses of this nature, like. With storage units, what's your big issue there? Well, you have similar kinds of issues with second homes and rentals, right? It's the F and T owner issue. Now, sometimes they go and check on the property, sometimes somebody lives there, but even then it. Who really knocks the weeds down until somebody really complains or whatever. A car wash, it tends to be a lot more, we got trash, uh, that is whine around, um, you've got.
Look at these new car washes that are being built around here, they're very well kept and they're clean, because if they look like trash. They're gonna go to one.
Uh, I have a friend that owned a couple of car washes, the smaller ones, not the big, would be crap whatever, but, um. And, and it's been really difficult for them to work with, and I was like, oh, I wonder why, and I found this, and I'm like, oh, I mean, I know why.
Yeah, but it's been difficult for them to work with the communities or?
Um, yeah, just all, all the rules and regulations have been.
Unless you build America.
And so it's just taken a lot longer. I think there was, um, one. I think South August City, maybe, maybe August City, I can't remember where they are, but. Anyway, um, they look better now than they used to, but if it's a concern and need a conditional and, but you do have this spelled out here, so.
Let me tell you, the newer tech with the automatic, uh, conveyor belts and all that, they're, they're getting a lot better than they used to be.
Make the Chick Fil A's and put them out there, right? Three lanes, you're darn near all flag people out there.
It's amazing how they.
Move people.
I'm okay to go back to the city, they're permitted on this.
I think with the way it's spelled out, I think it should be permitted.
Or take out.
Or take F out.
Yeah, what, either way, either make it conditional and you spell it out, or just take F out, but. F there makes it easy for a car wash operator to be like, okay, but would F be limiting? I guess the idea is, you want it to just be open and then you have someone come to you and you find a way to make it work, or you want someone to look at it and say, oh, I'm leaving this community, cause I can't. Fit these parameters, is it best if they leave if they don't put a parameter? I don't know.
Well, um, so one of the other issues with car washes is, um, waste and, um. Not, not solid waste, um, where the water.
Water.
Yeah, EPA stuff, but so, that's another reason why, so I didn't list it as. I didn't list it as conditional, um, that was already listed as conditional in our code, I just added that way and then put more specific standards. Yeah, and making sure that, that whatever's being drained is treated before it's pushed out.
Yeah, I'm just really keeping on, okay.
Car wash industry now, with as much of the cost to treat the water, they use reclaim water, so it goes into a vault. They bring it back in and that's all your high pressure side.
Should we, I mean, if we, if we can list those kinda details, cause.
But that's gonna be dictated by the sewer district, cause they're gonna go get their impact fee and say, well, if I'm gonna discharge ten thousand gallons a day, their impact fee's gonna be. Two hundred thousand dollars or more, and then it's not feasible.
So then, okay.
Come back with the.
That makes sense.
I don't think it's something is on the planning side that you dictate, if they got the money and they wanna spend the money and pay the fees.
That's a service.
But does that also? Way, what, they do a way have it, then they have kind of a rough draft of what is expected and then the conditional to make sure. With, it's meeting all the parameters.
Yeah, and just remember the conditional use, uh, standards are basically, you're not materially degrading, materially degrading a level of service of. Of three infrastructure facility, whatever it is, and so maybe somebody comes in with a car wash and they're like. Show us how you're not materially degrading X, Y, and Z, and, um. If we said permitted, just meet these four criteria, we'd have to get it, as opposed to asking deeper questions.
Okay.
This cover both kind of car washes. The long drive-through and the three.
Yeah, all kind, yes, all car.
Only four, you can't have more than four out.
I said three.
Is that what it says, does it say four?
It'll not be more than four. Washington, but then you see the industry starting to change a little bit, there's a lot more handbags going in.
Yeah.
Then it's that car wash industry, an interesting industry. Very high maintenance.
So, now that we've had a good conversation about car washes, I'm, I'm remembering the vast majority of this is already in your ordinance. I've just rewritten it, it actually makes sense. And maybe.
There we go.
Maybe I wrote it to make two make sense. You tell me, okay, uh, crow stable dwelling or, uh, dwelling unit. So this is where we say where dwelling units are allowed in these zones, which is pretty much all of them, uh, all the different street types. They need to go either above or behind street oriented commercial, if it's on one of those specific street types. But, makes sense?
But we're separating, like cross table dwelling units, we're talking.
I'm sorry, I, I ate, so G. H dwelling, it's, sorry. You know, you know, it's time to. Action, okay. Um, family food production, try not to do anything significantly different with family food production, uh, than what's already allowed in the code, so.
So really, can we, can we, someone on four acres? Is that a business idea? If you, I don't know.
Hard for me to say.
Yeah, it's a business, they can do that, it depends on what, what did you do on horses?
So horses aren't technically family food production, I think horses. Uh, let's see, grow our screen.
On your one acre, four pigs, four cows, one one acre.
I don't actually know who did the horses.
Where did they see forty, sorry? I see ten chickens.
Well, okay, so if you'll get A, it says forty thousand square feet to one acre. But before that, it says group A animals, either one pig, one sheep, one cow, or one goat. But, and group E B animals or fowl, or either a set of ten rabbits, ten chickens, ten dozen, five turkeys, five ducks, five. Five pigeons, so it says no more than four sets of group B, so that means you can have four.
Yeah, that's, so, group A is only allowed, you've got two acres or greater. They're like truckers. Jada, I gotta be honest with you, I don't know, we did horses.
Do you read them?
I think, I just recall, you had them on a fifteen thousand square foot lot. I thought we decided that was not right.
Yeah, okay, uh, and we're back, so horse requesting event training center. Horse requesting training facility, hang on, this is under animal services and uses, okay, or stable for horses, non-commercial. So no more than two horses shall be kept for each one half acre of land used for the horse. So that.
Yeah, and that's gotta be specifically just for the horses, it's gonna happen. That's, that's fortunate, but, okay.
Land devoted, land used. Yeah, that's good, land used for horses. Okay. Oh, but actually, let's, let's talk about that, because if we have. If we have a middle, um, a middle ground between medium lot and large lot residential. So right now, large lot residential is twenty thousand square feet, you're originally talking about, they changed that to fifteen thousand until Augn Valley said they're not gonna budge on twenty. So now we're, now we're sticking to large lot residential being twenty thousand four greater. Do you guys want to see on a fifteen thousand square foot lot, the allowance for horses?
No, no.
Then this automatically fixes that. Okay, good, you think I can value that fix, unintentional.
They did something right for us. That's just, that's. You'd have to build the barn as part of the house, I've seen.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we got gas refueling station, general retail sales, so the small items, general retail sales of large item. So, this is where your whole eighty pound thing comes in, general retail sales, also, we had like, um, furniture fixing and stuff like that. If the item that you're taking to purchase or have repaired is eight pounds or less, that's a small item. Uh, or if it's larger than eighty pounds, um, that's a, that's a large item.
Did you get that from UPS?
It is a baby, I always saw about seventy. I just did a little bit of research to find out, uh, what parcels would be, and I don't know if UPS had the standard or not, but, and we can change it to seventy, I was just thinking. All right, what will fit in the back of the car versus what's gonna need a UPS vehicle to drive away in it?
Everything we have at the depot, the woods package could be all seventy.
Yeah, okay, uh, maybe we adjust this to seventy. Yeah, and so I'm thinking the back of your car, so it's gotta either fit in the back of your car, passenger vehicle, and or be at least then eighty pounds. Uh, if it's small, I will, okay, uh, anything that requires you to bring a truck or is greater than eighty pounds. You're likely hobbling it in and smacking people and things if you're going in the door, so probably better to separate that up. Office uses, shooting range and training courses indoor or outdoor. Um, short-term rental owner occupied, oh, by the way, I don't know if you guys noticed, I don't remember where we might have allowed this indoor or outdoor training courses. But I just pulled that out of the M three zone, which we just put in there, um, a few years ago, I just copied and pasted it right into here. Really, the ideal, and I think you guys all picked up what I was putting down, the idea would be that this dome. Is taking care of, I mean, every, it covers everything at some point in time.
Yeah.
And that each of these streets are individual zones, um, and so that's why you see almost every single use listed in all the other zones combined. In this one zone. Sure, uh, short-term rental owner occupied, which by the way, uh, getting back to one of Sarah's concerns of allowing short-term rentals, um, on the western area.
I thought we axed that one.
You did, and I D.
We axed this stuff and then he brings it back and then we hash it forever.
Yeah, by the power of authority.
Looks like a fourteen hour debate.
I mean, you could do thirty days. And actually, I don't know if you noticed on, in Hawaii, on, um, Oahu. They're fighting it now, or they're litigating it, but they have designated zones for their short-term rentals, and if you're outside of those zones. They want to make it ninety days, but right now, a ten, uh, a judge overruled it and said they can do thirty days until they figure it out. Because the residents just want to be able to enjoy their.
So, not in your. Not on your pages, but off screen right here.
They're supportive, don't have anywhere to live or too many, like, and so I was like, huh, but here's your, your spot.
So just a reminder, looking at the top, we've got government institutional, vehicle oriented, commercial, mixed-use, commercial and multifamily residential as your first four columns. I just added a new line for, to divide out Augn Valley Planning Area, Western Weaver Planning Area. Um, and in the Augn Valley Planning Area, I said, a short-term rental that is not owner occupied. Is only allowed in a mixed-use commercial, um, vehicle or into commercial or government institutional. That way, we're, we're saying, well, they're not gonna be allowed in a multifamily residential or any of the other single-family residential zones. That, that gives us enough of the ability to get, um, decent affordability in multifamily and others. While still allowing a little bit of commercial use in these mixed-use commercial.
And it helps with your fight. Cause we've allowed something.
Yes, and actually, to be honest, they're, they're more permissive up there, um, the, they don't want to be more permissive.
But that is their industry, I mean, they have, they're industry tourism.
Now, wait a minute, they're going after a new city, mostly based on. Well, I know that, but still, the, the ones that, the ones that. Okay, that, that's. Big, um, hot topics is, is short-term rental. I mean, every time Van Der Nak writes an article about it, it's about short-term rental engaged.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Or gauge in short term.
Owner occupy, I would still limit it, because I'm afraid we're gonna. Well, not a need, and then we really need to fill those with people that work and live in the area.
Yeah, we could certainly do it, so owner occupied means that the owner who owns that building has to be in that building, so really, we're talking about the origination. Like what Airbnb was in the beginning, you got an extra room, you're.
Extra room could be the, someone who lives in the community could be there and spend a rent to get to someone who's temporarily.
So that's, that mirrors what's on line three thirty-seven, right?
Yeah, it, uh, I think what Sarah's saying is, it's, it's still permissive in the, um, small lot residential as well as the multifamily.
But I'd rather take it out of those two zones as well.
Okay.
Personally, cause I just don't think we have the need, I think we'll be, I think they will be filled with people who wanna pay less and drive twenty minutes, thirty minutes. Into, um, cooking, you know.
Okay.
And maybe eventually there will be a reason to stay in Western River County.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out. Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out. Are the uh the different areas, the Augan Valley Planning Area and Western, are they defined in the code as well?
Yeah, I I made sure they were defined a little while back, cuz they weren't defined at that time.
Yeah.
You're on a highland, we probably get hit the most. Short-term rentals, if they allowed it, is where they're focused.
Oh, you're right, yeah, you would be the most.
Put them up there.
But I think it would be much better, because we're so close to infrastructure that we have people living, like even more important, you went to Highlands, we're just. We're in the middle of infrastructure. Put a lot of money into infrastructure, put up with people working.
I also have a question.
You've got a lot of, you may.
I've got a lot of, you've got a lot of Vs over here, but not here or here.
Conditionals?
Yeah.
We're trying to get rid of.
So.
Just not permitted.
Are there, no, no, CCP, PPP. Is there, is there any real benefit to having conditional uses? Versus just a well-regulated permitting.
And we've got actually a well-regulated permitted use right now, oh, you're right, actually.
I'm confused with what you're doing with, cuz what I'm saying, I don't think is what you put up there.
Um I probably didn't.
He's still fixing.
And then notes, right, just permitted in vertical ones, but not in any residential.
Let's down here, he's gonna get to this, he's still.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, everybody.
And then I interrupted with my rudeness.
You make a good banner, though. Can't argue. I wanna be like you.
Okay, short-term rental, Auga Valley Planning Area, this doesn't need a C anymore, does it? See, that is in small lot residential, sorry.
Didn't you say Scott, she said you that?
Yeah, uh zoom in and move around and, yeah.
Fine for young eyes.
Yeah, this was written before the short-term rental ordinance was adopted, now we got an adoption, so we got great standards, okay. Sarah, you want it?
PPP. Right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I think if everyone agrees, I mean, we need a place for people to come stay, but I don't think we need that.
Well, let me ask you this, though, just to be devil's advocate a little bit here, these are already owner occupied. So the the owners are presumably on the premises at all times.
It's not about the disruption, it's about limiting affordable housing.
They're actually going the opposite way, the Augan Valley is, Augan Valley wants to limit short-term rentals and limit affordability.
I see.
See, it it, the more, if someone's gonna make more money as a short-term rental, possibly, I don't think, maybe, eventually they might, and so instead of.
I get you. Yeah.
Right now, in ABU, yeah, uh you can't do a short-term rental in ABU, whether it's in the Auga Valley.
We can't do it.
Yeah, do you want to be allowed to?
Charlie can make it so.
I think it's a good idea. A short-term rental is a a thirty day or less.
Yeah.
Thirty day maximum, so if you, if you go more than thirty days, you're into a a right order. Which is generally permitted, right, I mean.
Yeah, anyone can have for thirty days because of. And so if there's like, who needs corporate housing or whatnot, they can always provide that, it's just gonna be thirty day rentals instead of.
Which is, think of again, as the governor talked before this last legislative session, he was saying the big thing that you wanted to tackle was the. Um under regulation of short-term rentals cannibalizing affordable housing, cuz that's what's happening. And didn't happen, nothing happened in the legislative session to even address that.
They tried.
They tried something, I don't think they were trying to go in that same direction.
Or, anything like in North Shore, just look, and it has this full disclaimer and nothing's read about.
Wow. Okay, um where are we now?
We are online at three thirty, three forty-one. Which is gonna be different of yours from two fifty-three, no, yes, two fifty-one.
Okay. Self-storage, any questions, comments, concerns?
Already had that.
Think we're talking about a lot, you guys wanna put in ski areas?
I think we should, yeah.
There you go. Temporary building or use tire shop vendor short term. Don't go in gone, guys wanna talk about standards for the last ten minutes, or do you wanna go home?
How long is standard gonna take it? Are we gonna get in?
No, it could probably be pretty quiet. Okay, great, I'll see you guys next week. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Are we using the same one next week?
Yeah.
Well, that's right, never mind.
Out for you.
Well, they're not new either, it's the exact same.
I agree.
I think there's, I think there's a little thing on the agenda, so. But just, yeah, just tear out the back and I'll put it in recycling.
I'm, well, we might want the Pachi.
I think there's gonna be, there's gonna be a, this is the end of. The, the uh rule of order are gonna come back on. So I didn't send out my email about the rule of order.
Yeah.
Review that, cuz I think Rick was saying he's gonna add that to the agenda. I know, but now the Auga Valley changed and screwed it up, so we've gotta relook at it.
Well, kind of explained, my understanding is, is Augan Valley. Just wanted a little bit more definition in there, and so if you're okay to align with them on that, there, the changes aren't really.
It's the stuff we didn't want.
I haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
Through it, it doesn't change anything substantially, it just adds a little bit more to it, so. This, that's my understanding.
Wasn't agendas. Probably shouldn't, Liam's not here, so he can't get us. Defend us from getting ourselves. I I tease, I tease about Augan Valley every once in a while, but I should probably say, I like. Really love those guys. Definitely a new set of issues.
Okay, then I'll stop recording.
I tell you, uh Crockett did the same training with those guys as he did with you guys.
Oh, my God.